In compliance with Governor Newsom's executive order N 2920, in response to the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the district will conduct the Board of Education's meetings as a teleconference. Given the health risks associated with COVID-19, the Newport-Mason Unified School District has decided not to open the boardroom to the public. So we will have roll call, Rosie.
Trustee Yelsey.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Bartow.
Here.
Trustee Crane.
Not yet.
Trustee Ursula.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Mr. Lee Sung, superintendent.
Here.
Okay, and we have community input on closed session agenda items. We have four comments. So since I'm presiding over the beginning of this meeting as vice president, since Martha Flore is no longer with us and we no longer have a clerk. So Ms. Matoye, would you read the statement? Do you have it? You're on mute.
I don't have it in my hand, but I can pull it.
I'll just, I'll read it.
Just do it all.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the closed session agenda via electronically submitted comments. Each speaker has three minutes of comments read time. And per board policy 9323, there's a maximum of 20 minutes of comments for topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments, depending on the topic and the number of persons submitting comments. All comments are recorded in full in the meeting video record. And we do have four comments on closed sessions. So Ms. Anderson, would you like to start reading it?
Yes. My comment is from Heather McGonigal. The thought of having more in-person minutes taken away from our children is unspeakable. The learning gap amongst our children is great and will become even greater. Our children need to see their teachers, their classrooms, and step foot on school grounds more than ever. They need a stable environment for learning to take place, and some households are unable to provide that. Every teacher and student interaction is crucial to their development.
And then we have one on item 4F, Ms. Bartow.
My comment is from Amanda Anderson. I implore the board to take action during this unprecedented pandemic. Countless teachers, support staff, students, and even entire classrooms are being quarantined due to exposure to COVID-19. Our students cannot even obtain a hot meal due to limited staffing availability. Students are scared, parents are scared, staff members are scared. Some school staff members are working into the night and on the weekends in order to properly contact, trace COVID cases and exposures, make phone calls, and send out exposure letters. The number of COVID cases are higher than ever before. Our hospitals are stretched to the max. Other school districts have already transitioned to distance learning until the end of January in an effort to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. What is NMUSC doing? How many students and employees are going to get sick before something changes? Please return to distance learning until the positive case rate falls and medical care will be available if needed.
Did Carol come in yet?
No, she's not in yet.
Would you like me to read her?
She's still trying.
Yes. Ms. Ursula, would you read that?
Sure, sure. This is from Gretchen Cope. I would like to bring up issues with the district's response to COVID-19. First, the district's dashboard is very inaccurate and misleading. Students who are learning 100% online are not being removed from the total population listed on the dashboard. For example, at NHHS, it shows our student population just over 2,400. Out of these 2,400, over 400 are officially in cohort C, meaning they are never on campus. This makes our positivity rate shown on the dashboard inaccurate and misleading to the community. Students who are officially learning 100% online should be removed from the total population, so the number reflects only students who come on campus. You are fudging the numbers to make the community believe campuses are safer than they actually are. Second, more and more parents are keeping their students home and having them learn remotely. We were forced back into in-person instruction because of community outcry, also because you guys wanted to abuse the loophole of once a school opens, it doesn't have to close. But now the community is backtracking on this. If students have the option to not come on campus because they do not feel it is safe, why do teachers not have that option? Why are we still doing this to sometimes have only one student in our classroom and the rest on Zoom? Finally, with the spikes in cases we saw over Thanksgiving, coming back from the winter break is going to be even worse. I would urge you to do the logical thing and having us on distance learning at least through January 15th, so any positive cases can come to light before putting us all back on the campus together and risking more infections. Please do the right and honest thing and make the student population counts on the dashboard accurate and reflective only of students who are coming on campus and putting us back on distance learning at the minimum through January 15th, as other districts have done. Do you want me to do the next? Okay, this one is from David B. Close the schools, stop putting employees and students and their families at risk. Stop letting your pride and hotiness overlook what is happening beneath your nose. Your infrastructure is crumbling and you don't care.
Okay, thank you. Those are the comments for closed session. We will now, for open, for closed session, we will now move to closed session. The items are 4A, conference with legal counsel, one case; 4B, conference with legal counsel, one case; 4C, conference with legal counsel, one case; 4D, public employee discipline dismissal, release employment; 4E, conference with labor negotiator, NMUSC representative; 4F, threat to public services or facilities; and 4G, student discipline, one case. So now all board members should log out and log in to the closed session. Thank you, and we will be back at 6 o'clock. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our board meeting of December 15th, 2020. It's a very special evening tonight. We gave a great send-off to our three board members who left last week. It was very nice in this boardroom. We, we had a little Zoom party with them, and it was very nice. And tonight, we are welcoming our three new board members, who are going to be officially sworn in right now. And so we will start with that. Ms., Mr. Lee Sung, we will have first Carol Crane.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all foreign enemies and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will
That I will.
well and faithfully discharge.
Well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon
The duties upon.
which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, girlfriend.
Our next trustee is Leah Ursulou.
All right. Hello, Leah.
Hello.
Okay, raise your right hand or repeat after me. I, Leah Ursulou.
I, Leah Ursulou.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend
the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will
And that I will.
well and faithfully discharge.
Well and faithfully discharge.
the duties upon which
The duties upon which
I'm about to enter.
I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
And our third new trustee is Krista Wigan.
Hello, Krista, raise your right hand or repeat after me. I, Krista Wigan.
I, Krista Wigan.
Do solemnly affirm
Do solemnly affirm.
that I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will
That I will.
well and faithfully discharge.
Well and faithfully discharge.
the duties upon
The duties upon.
which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and we have one comment from the public. Trustee Matoye, would you please read that?
Yes. This comment is from Cynthia Blackwell. I would like to welcome trustee Crane, trustee Ursulou, and trustee Wigan. It is time for change in Newport Mesa. Change that includes giving NMFT and CSEA a place on the agenda. It is also time to work with the cities of Costa Mesa and Newport Beach so that I don't have to hear a letter being read during public comments because leadership didn't have the decency to acknowledge their concerns and propose projects at Ensign and Estancia. The biggest change that I'm looking forward to is the fresh and innovative ideas that new trustees will have to offer. With the election two years ago of trustees Anderson and Bartow, we now have a board majority that can move Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers ahead, especially in the area of technology. This is the dawn of a fresh start for the students and teachers, support staff, and families of the Newport-Mason Unified School District.
Thank you. And on behalf of the four returning trustees, we want to welcome all of you. 6 o'clock tonight was not your first trial by fire. You've actually been involved. You were pre-sworn in on Friday, and you got lots of thick books to take home or deliver to your home. You've been reading all weekend. We've already had a meeting since 2:30 today. So they're, they're in it already and ready to roll, and we're really excited to have all of you here. So thank you. All right, we'll move on to the opening ceremonies. We'll have a moment of reflections and pledge to the flag. And trustee Crane, would you like to lead us in the pledge? So please rise. Okay, adoption of the agenda. Oh, oh, excuse me. Can we wait for one second? We have on Zoom, I'm sorry, we have a state assemblywoman, Cadi Petri Harris. Norris, who would like to speak to the new trustees?
Well, thank you so much. It is such a pleasure to be able to join you all tonight. And I just want to offer my deep congratulations to our new trustees, Carol Crane and Krista Wigan and Leah Ursulou. You have stepped up to serve our community in a time of tremendous challenge. And as an assembly member, but even more importantly, as a mom, I am so grateful. I'm grateful for you and the work that I know you're going to do to serve our kids and serve our community and really look forward to partnering with you and to working with you for, for the years to come. So thank you to everyone on, on the board for your service, for your leadership, and for your partnership. And to everyone at home, happy holidays and be safe and stay well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for joining our meeting to congratulate them. Okay, we'll move on to adoption of the agenda.
I move the adoption of the agenda with item number 17C5 being moved to discussion action.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Bartow.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Okay. That was moved by Ms. Trustee Matoye, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Okay. Somebody say. Oh, right. Okay, adoption of the minutes 111720 and 12920. I'm sorry.
I was on.
Adoption of the minutes for 111720 and 12920.
Move adoption of the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bartow. Roll call.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Bartow.
Yes.
Trustee Crane. Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Okay, the vote was the vote was 7-0. We will now move on to our annual organizational meeting, and this will be conducted by Mr. Lee Sung.
All right, good evening, everybody. It's my pleasure to run this portion of the meeting. It's very exciting when we go about this process of the organization for the year, starting with the approval of the election of our board president. And we will go ahead, and I'm going to follow a script very closely, and hopefully we'll get into a nice pattern and rhythm throughout this whole process. But we're now going to address item 11A, approval of election of the board president. The floor is now open for nominations for board president. Does anyone wish to make a nomination?
Yelsey.
Okay. Nomination for Karen Yelsey. Does anyone wish to second that nomination?
I'll second. Bartow.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone wish to make a second nomination for board president? Okay. Seeing none. We will now move to, into discussion of the nomination of trustee Yelsey for board president. Okay. All right. Yeah, so just want to give an opportunity for anybody to discuss. Okay, so since there's none, we'll now bring the nomination to vote. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
No.
Trustee Bartow.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Okay, so the record shows that it is 6-1. Congratulations, trustee Yelsey, for the board president. Okay, now moving on to item 11B, approval, the election of board vice president. Open for nominations.
I would like to nominate Michelle Bartow.
I second it.
Okay, seconded by trustee Yelsey. Okay, does anyone wish to make a second nomination for board vice president? Okay, seeing none, any discussion? Seeing none, we will now move to call for the vote. Rosie.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Bartow.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. That was 7-0. Congratulations, trustee Bartow, vice president. Moving on to item 11C, approval of the election of the board clerk. Open for nominations.
I would like to nominate trustee Matoye for clerk.
Okay. Nominated for trustee Matoye.
Second.
Okay. Seconded by trustee Crane. Okay. Does anyone wish to make another nomination for board clerk?
I'd like to nominate trustee Anderson.
Okay, we have a second nomination for trustee Anderson. Is there a second for trustee Anderson for board clerk? Okay, trustee Anderson seconds her nomination. Okay. So we now have two trustees for board clerk. So at this time, I want to open it up for any discussion on these two nominees for board clerk. Okay. No discussion, all right. I'm going to read a little bit here, since we have two individuals that have been nominated. So please be advised that because there are two nominations for board clerk, we'll be following the 2020 Robert Rules of Order 12th Edition for the board vote. As such, we will discuss each candidate and therefore vote on the candidates in order in which they were nominated. Okay. So since there was no discussion, we will now bring the nominations to a vote. But per the Robert Rules of Order, we will vote on trustee A first, which is trustee Matoye. And if trustee Matoye receives four votes, then the motion passes. If trustee Matoye does not receive four votes, then we move to the second person who was nominated. Okay, so roll call vote for trustee Matoye for board clerk. Rosie.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
No.
Trustee Bartow.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
No.
Trustee Matoye.
Yes.
Trustee Wigan.
No.
Okay. Motion passes for three. Congratulations, trustee Matoye, board clerk. All right, next we move to the appointment of the secretary to the Board of Education. And in this case, the person is the superintendent, and that would be me. So so here's something I want to propose. We can do roll call votes for every single one of these, including the committees. But at this point, if it's agreeable to all of you, we will just call for the vote for the ayes. Everybody turns their mute, their mute button off, so they, their microphone is on, to say aye. I will also call for nays. If I hear any nays, I will stop and ask Rosie to conduct a roll call vote so we can get it for the record of who voted yes and who voted no. But if we have unanimous and they're all ayes, then we don't need to do a roll call. Okay, does that sound fine? Okay. All right, so again, 11D, approve the appointment of the secretary to the Board of Education, and that would be the superintendent, myself, Russell Lisa. Anyone like to?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, turn your mute buttons off, microphones on. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Abstention? Okay, so for the record, 7-0. Okay. Next item, 11E, approve the appointment of assistant secretary. And in the assistant secretary are all of the assistant supes. Assistant soup, Leona Olson, assistant superintendent Tim Holcomb, assistant superintendent John Drake, assistant superintendent Sarah Jockum, filling the role as assistant secretary.
I move to approve the assistant superintendents, Mr. Tim Holcomb, Ms. Leona Olson, Dr. Sarah Jockum, and Mr. John Drake.
As assistant secretary.
Sorry.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Move to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Abstention? Okay, let the record show, 7-0 for assistant secretary. Item 11F, approve the recommendation for chief negotiator. And that would be our assistant superintendent, chief, chief human resources officer, Leona Olson.
Move approval of the chief negotiator, Leona Olson.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nay? Abstention? Congratulations, Leona, by the way. Congratulations. 7-0. 11G, approve the designation of management personnel. And all the management positions are listed in the agenda. So I will not take the time to read them here.
Move approval of all the management personnel.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, moving to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Okay, the record shows 7-0.
Mr. Lee Sung.
Yes.
If new board members would like to speak up or anyone else, that's fine. I'm just doing it to go quickly. So if anybody else would like to pipe in, I will be happy to back down. So I'll slow down, so, no, keep going, okay. Don't want to be early 11 today.
Shar, you were very helpful moving this along. Appreciate it. Okay. Now moving on to 11H. So this is one of our first committee appointments in approving the election of representatives to the Office of College and Career Education, CTE Advisory Council for 2021. And we all have our cheat sheets of the committees. So open for nominations, whether they be self-nominations or otherwise.
I would like to move Carol Crane and Karen Yelsey be on the CTE council.
Okay. So we got Crane and Yelsey. And I heard a second. Who is that?
Leah.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any discussion? All right, any discussion on that? Okay, and I was given a line here. "I move that the nominations be closed and a unanimous vote be cast."
I like that.
Okay, that came from a veteran trustee who?
I second that.
Okay, so, and any of you can say that phrase at any point. "I would like to move the nominations be closed and a unanimous vote be cast." Okay, so if that's where, Shar, did you say that? Okay, all right. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Okay, so we've got Carol Crane and Karen Yelsey for 11H. Next is 11I, election of the crop representative.
I move that Michelle Barto be the representative.
Second.
You may want to get an alternate.
Do we need an alternate?
Would someone like to be an alternate? Yeah.
I'll volunteer if no one else will do it, but if?
I'll be an alternate.
Oh, who said? Oh, good.
Okay, so we have Barto as the representative and Wigan as the alternate. Any others?
I move that nominations be closed and a unanimous vote accepted.
Okay.
Second.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay, seven zero. Next is 11J approve the election of District English Learners Advisory Committee, DLEC, for one term.
I move trustee Anderson, trustee Barto, and trustee Ursulou be nominated for the district, for the DLEC.
Second.
Okay, let me make sure I got this right. I heard trustee Anderson, trustee Yelsey, and trustee Ursulou?
Trustee Anderson, trustee Barto.
Barto.
And Ursulou.
Okay, I got two out of three, two out of three. Okay, all right. Any others?
I second it.
Okay, second by trustee Crane. Any others? Okay, someone want to move?
That we move that nomination to be closed?
And a unanimous vote?
Vote.
All right. All in favor of trustee Anderson, trustee Barto, trustee Ursulou, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Seven zero. Okay. Now moving to the election of the liaison with special education community advisory committee. Nominations open?
I nominate Carol Crane and Charlene Metoyer.
Second.
Okay. We have a nomination of Carol Crane and Charlene Metoyer, and I heard a second. Okay, you got that? Who did the second?
Leah.
Okay, trustee Ursulou? Okay. Any others?
I move that nominations be closed and a unanimous vote cast.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of trustee Crane and trustee Metoyer for the CAC, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay, seven zero. Next is 11L approve the election of representative to nominating committee on county school district organization.
Trustee Anderson, did that committee meet last year?
Process where I just got an email late December, or early December, that said, please vote for something. That's why I didn't sign up again.
Okay. Anyone want to self-nominate themselves?
I nominate myself. Charlene Metoyer.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any other?
Wait for that email.
Any others? Okay, someone like to move nominations be closed?
I'd like to, go ahead.
I move that we, that we move that nomination be closed in a unanimous vote.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, all in favor of trustee Metoyer for the nominating committee of county school district reorganization, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay, seven zero. Next is 11M approve the election of student board member liaison, open for nominations.
I have a question before we nominate, which I will nominate Mrs. Barto, because since it's in our board bylaws that this is now the duty of the vice president, does it still?
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Committee, do we still need it to be a committee thing?
Yeah, thank you. We did talk about that.
It's on the board policy.
Yeah, exactly, the one that we just approved. So this one, we do not need to go through this process, that per board policy, that was just amended last week, the vice president. So trustee Barto, you are the student board member liaison for the year, as the vice president. Okay? All right, 11N approve the election of the superintendent's student advisory committee liaison. Open for nominations.
Can we have two, or do we have to have one?
We've had one with the approval of the board. You could have two and rotate if you'd like. But we've had one historically.
If we can have two, then I would like to nominate Carol Crane and Karen Yelsey. Board members, anybody else feel?
I would second that.
Okay. Did you second it? You're not very loud, it's hard for me to hear you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Okay, so let me make sure I got this for the record. There's a nomination for trustee Crane and trustee Yelsey. And that we would have two. We would be voting for two, and they would rotate between meetings. Okay, is that the nomination? Okay, is there a second? Okay, we got that? Okay, any others? Okay, so the vote would be for trustee Crane and trustee Yelsey superintendent's student advisory committee liaison. Okay?
Nominations be closed and a unanimous vote taken.
Okay, all right, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay, seven zero. Okay, next is 11O approve the election of liaison with Costa Mesa Chamber of Commerce Education Committee.
I'd like to nominate trustee Anderson.
Okay, trustee Anderson's nominated. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate trustee Metoyer.
Trustee Metoyer?
It says one or three. Do we need more than two?
Probably one to three.
Trustee, I would like to nominate trustee Ursulou.
Ursulou, second.
I've been on it for two years, so I was taking a break, which is why I didn't sign up for it, because I wanted to let other people be a part of it if they wanted to.
If trustee Ursulou is willing to accept the nomination?
Sure.
Okay, cool.
Okay. So trustee Anderson, you are withdrawing that nomination for this appointment?
Yes, I may do it again next year, but I think it's for other people to have an opportunity.
Great. Okay, so we have two nominees that could fill two spots. Trustee Metoyer and trustee Ursulou. Okay, any others? Okay, someone want to move? Nominations be closed and a unanimous vote be cast.
Good, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And abstention? Seven zero. Okay, 11P approve Costa Mesa Youth Sports Council Board Liaison. Nomination?
I nominate trustee Anderson and trustee Metoyer.
I, do you see these little white ones on the outside, Carol? Those are the people that signed up for it.
Oh, I see.
Would you amend your nomination?
Yes, I amend my nomination. To nominate trustee, is it, wait, youth sports council?
Uh huh.
Yeah, youth sports council.
And trustee Metoyer.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Yelsey. Okay, any other nominations? Discussion? Okay, someone want to move nominations be closed?
I move nominations be called and closed and a unanimous decision be taken, vote be taken, sorry.
Okay.
Mark is starting, it's not even late yet.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All in favor of trustee Metoyer and trustee Ursulou for the Costa Mesa Youth Sports Council Board Liaison, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay, seven zero. All right, 11Q approve the election of legislative representative.
I'd like to nominate Carol Crane for legislative representative.
Okay. Trustee Crane, any other nominations?
Mrs. Barto, would you like to be the alternate, or would you like to do it? Okay, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Barto as the alternate.
Second.
Trustee Barto as the alternate.
Okay, and we have trustee Barto nominated as the alternate. Okay, any others? All right, seeing none, someone want to move the nominations be closed?
I move the nominations be closed and a unanimous vote be cast.
Second.
You? Okay, all in favor of Carol Crane as the election of legislative, legislative representative, and trustee Barto as the alternate, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And abstention? Okay, seven zero. We're almost there, folks. Okay, 11R is the election of representative of Newport Beach Youth Council. And I got a message earlier today that this committee or this youth council is going to be on hold, right?
Mr. Lisa, yes, I talked to Mr. Brayson Alexander, and they are not holding it for this school year. But if things change for the fall, they might, so we could still go ahead with it. And if we come back in the summer, still include it in through the end of the year.
Okay, all right.
I nominate trustee Barto and trustee Yelsey as co-members of the Newport Beach Youth Council.
My second.
Okay, so we have a nomination for trustee Barto and trustee Yelsey, filling both seats here for this position. Any others? Okay, and I'm sorry, did we get a second on that?
There was a second.
Second.
Second?
Second.
I move that nominations be closed and a unanimous vote be cast.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstention? Seven zero. Okay, next is the election of liaison with Newport Mesa Schools Foundation.
I'd like to nominate Carol Crane and Karen Yelsey.
I'd like to nominate trustee Anderson.
Okay, so how many spots do we have here? One to two, and one alternate.
I nominate myself to be the alternate.
Okay, so we've got trustee Wigan.
There are too many, I can elect to step off.
Yeah, so we have three that are nominated for the spot, for one or two spots, and we have one alternate. Okay, I lost track, did we have a second?
I seconded, but I also said that if we need to, if we have too many, I would, I can step down.
You can just move me off the alternate and then push down the three. That would work.
Okay.
We get a parliamentary note on how to do that properly.
So, so let me, I've heard a couple of voices, I wasn't sure who said what. So, Michelle, did you?
So I don't, I don't want to do it. I nominated trustee Anderson.
Okay. So you, we have Anderson is nominated. We have trustee Yelsey nominated, and we have trustee Crane. And trustee Crane, you were making a comment that?
Because if you, it's just one to two trustees, and we already have reached our limit, and if trustee Wigan would like to be the alternate, I will defer to that.
If trustee Crane, we're both in the same area, and it would be nice to have someone from Newport Beach, so if you're going to do that, I will step off.
Okay.
Okay, so I appreciate the discussion, so current nominations, then we would have Carol Crane, trustee Anderson, and trustee Wigan as the alternate. Okay? All right, any other discussion or nominations? Okay, someone want to make a motion to close the nominations?
Make a motion to close the nominations and the vote be unanimous.
Okay, all in favor of second, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of trustee Crane, trustee Anderson, and trustee Wigan as the alternate, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Seven zero. Okay. 11T Newport Mesa Unified School District Visual and Performing Arts Committee Representative.
I nominate trustees Crane and trustees Metoyer.
Crane. Metoyer. Okay, any others?
I do have a question. Am I over-signed up, overcommitted here, or in your opinions, trustees have been in those positions?
How many do you have, Mrs.?
A lot. I think I'm on like, about six. At least six.
Legislature is paperwork. Let me get the other page. CTE is time to special ed three times a year, roughly, okay? That one's that one, superintendent, you'll love superintendent advisory committee, that'll be fun.
Legislative.
Legislature is paperwork.
Okay.
And?
Foundation.
Foundation should be every month, they have an early meeting, and they appreciate attendance. And Visual and Performing Arts, we haven't had one, it's three times a year, but it's fascinating.
Okay, all right, I'll do it. I accept.
If you need backup on your legal research, I'll help you.
All right, that's good.
I love the arts, so, I'm in.
Okay.
You need a note for next time to include the schedule, like the times and dates that they usually, it has on here the dates, but not the time, so I think that could be helpful for next year.
It would be very helpful, because the youth sports committee meets at 7:30, so that's, that sounds good.
All right, so we have two trustees, trustee Crane, trustee Metoyer. And any other discussion? If not, can somebody make a motion to close?
I move nominations be closed and unanimous vote taken.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? And abstention, seven zero, you guys are now saying aye in harmony, that one was a perfect, a perfect third in perfect harmony there, okay. Okay, eleven U is the Wellness Advisory Committee Representative.
I'd like to nominate trustee Anderson.
I nominate trustee Crane.
I know.
And I'm taking my name off.
Okay. I'd like to nominate trustee Ursulu and ask the committee if we can have three members on the committee.
I'm willing to step off it for trustee Ursulu to be able to be on it.
Well, I have a question. Can I continue to participate as a parent, I've been a member for years, can I continue?
Oh.
You can take my name off this.
Well, no, I have a question, if she's there as a parent, can you not be a board, can you not be a board member when you go to something?
Well, in reality, it's very hard not to be a board member anymore, you guys are, so I think it'd be good for you to be there as both a parent and a board member, so.
Okay, so I want to leave you there.
Good, so we have nominations for trustee Ursulu and trustee Crane. Did I get that correct? Okay, all right, any other nominations or discussion? Somebody make a motion to close?
I move the nominations be closed and a unanimous vote be cast.
Second.
Okay, thank you, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Abstention, thank you, seven zero. Okay, next is the Policy Review Team. Policy Review Team, and we need, and this one, we need three trustees.
I'd like to nominate trustee Anderson, trustee Ursulu, and trustee Metoye.
I second that.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, we have a second on that? Trustee Yelsey seconded, all right, so someone make a motion to close?
I make motion to close and the votes be unanimous.
Okay, thank you, so this is for trustee Anderson, trustee Ursulu, and trustee Metoye, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstention, seven zero. Okay, our last one, eleven W, it's a good thing because we're almost out of the alphabet. So this next one is the Political Action Representative for Orange County School Boards Association.
I nominate trustee Barto as the Political Action Rep and myself as second, as alternate.
I second that.
Can we have two reps and one alternate?
If you would like to do it, I'll take myself off.
Oh, I would like to do it if that's possible.
Okay, not a problem, I'm off.
Thank you.
You're it.
Thank you, I nominate myself for alternative.
Oh, I'll nominate.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're trustee.
Yeah, I know, I thought we could have one to two members.
Well, then I nominate you as two people and I'll, that's good.
A nice second.
As a real person.
My second.
Okay, sorry, I'm hearing voices, but I don't know who's speaking, so we have, who's nominated? Okay, so trustee Barto and trustee Yagan as the alternate.
Trustee Crane.
Trustee Yagan as reps, I'll stay alternate if you want an alternate.
Okay.
Both are reps.
Okay, Barto, Yagan. And no Metoye.
Metoye can be alternate again.
Okay, and Metoye is alternate.
Because I'm going to be at those meetings anyway.
Okay, trustee Barto, trustee Yagan, trustee Metoye as an alternate. Did I get that correct?
I seconded.
Okay, and it's been seconded, all right, any other discussion, any further nominations? Okay, so move to close?
Go.
Okay.
Second.
All right, thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstention, seven zero. Okay, I think we did it. All right. Thank you all for helping me through that.
Okay, normally we have an adjournment while we switch positions on a dais, but since we're not switching positions right now, I believe we can continue on with the meeting.
That is correct, yep.
Okay. So we will move on to the agenda for the evening, and number thirteen are student board member reports. And as the vice president this past year, I had the opportunity to work closely with the student board members, and that's something that I really enjoyed, and trustee Barto, I think you will as well, it's, they're a great group of people. So we have them here for the year, for the, for the evening. Paulina Enriquez Vazquez will be in the roll call vote, but all the board members are here. And we gave them as a topic tonight, since this is the first year of the school, of the first new collegiate calendar, how do you feel about the first semester, and we are ending with exams this week, so they're going to discuss that. So. Paulina will have the vote, but she is not, she's with Early College High School and they are on a different schedule, so she won't be speaking tonight. So we'll go to Elizabeth Libby from the Cloud Campus.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Libby representing Cloud Campus. I conducted a short survey requesting feedback from secondary students regarding the first semester and finals. I received forty-six responses to that survey. Ninety percent of the student, responding students rated their first semester on a scale from one to five, between three and five. I also received some written feedback and will share a few responses that I believe best represent student body experiences. We have a response from an eleventh grader saying, classes a few times a week has allowed me to spend more time learning independently and allowed for me to have experience similar to that of college. I appreciate my eleventh grade English teacher having the option for students to meet once a week if they complete all their assignments or don't need extra help. My counselor was also very helpful in reaching out and contacting me when I was having troubles with my schedule. The clubs here at Cloud Campus are very welcoming and diverse. I thought that the Cloud Campus final schedule was fair as the core classes were very, were evenly distributed over the four day week. The early announcement of the schedule prepared everyone for the next week and gave time for those who had classes that conflicted to resolve this issue. And then this is a response from an eighth grader. I enjoy meeting my peers and engaging with my teachers. In my opinion, my core teachers have done a phenomenal job of being flexible, but still setting standards and developing curriculum for students. Their lessons and lectures have been interactive and engaging for students, and overall, I believe that they have made a great effort in communicating with students. Students, on the other hand, have not been helpful in that process. All the classes I attend weekly, about three to ten students have their cameras on and are engaging the whole time. With time, we've seen more students participating, and the same goes with breakout rooms. When it comes to the students, I believe in order to get them to experience, what they need is to participate and be fully involved in their learning. I would have to say the final schedule is highly beneficial. I think that the time was given was generous for some, but for others, for myself, it was perfect. The Zoom was quiet and free of interruptions, which had benefits on focusing on my test. There was more clarity in getting more sleep in the morning and having a larger period of time dedicated to one class. And this is the final response from an eleventh grader. I really like Cloud Campus, I didn't know how well it would work for me until I tried it. I was skeptical and anxious how this semester would work, how effective the classes would be in the whole experience. I'm really happy to be here instead of back at my old high school. I have lots of friends from my old high school who do not know what's happening from week, one week to the next. I like the consistency of Cloud Campus in this weird time. I also like how the increased independence and responsibility Cloud Campus requires. It seems like it's very good training for college. I like having more control over my schedule and the freedom to decide when I do schoolwork, get exercise, and see my friends. The teachers have been great, they've given us a lot of guidance and a lot of independence at the same time. They have faith in us and I appreciate that. My family likes how I can go from school, do school from anywhere. It's not ni, it's nice to not have to cut a family trip short. Finals week, the first semester so far, has been a lot like the finals I've been used to at my old high school. I'm not overloaded and I like that there's a makeup session for people that need it. I'm happy Cloud Campus has been here for me this year. It's different and better than the distance learning we had last spring, first when we locked down because of the virus. I kind of miss having a more involved high school experience, but I'm lucky to have a lot of friends outside of my classes already. Overall, I would have to say the students have enjoyed their first semester at Cloud Campus and have benefited from the new final schedule and been more confident in their understanding going into their finals. However, I do agree that there needs to be an emphasis on student participation in Zooms and online school, and even for hybrid schools, and hopefully that will improve in the next semester, thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next, we have Troy Saboda from Cronod Omar High School.
Hello, my name is Troy from CDM, and we talked about the, you know, the collegiate calendar. And I would say like the two things, that one is the finals ending before like holiday break as opposed to in January. And I would say that's very, very nice for a lot of people, like, and knowing that we can have a real break and we don't have to forget all that knowledge, super helpful. I would say that it is, with the late Thanksgiving we had this year, it was, we got right back to work and it was pretty speedy, two or three weeks. But we like, it's nice to know that we're heading toward the end. And then on the, on the other side of the collegiate calendar, though, starting in August, since we never really talked about that, given COVID was a much more important topic and still is, but I would say even that is nice, and especially with summer work regarding AP courses and that stuff, it helps reduce the summer load significantly and we'll be able to match colleges and other schools around the area. I would say one thing with regards to COVID is that the final schedule this week was kind of a little unorganized, I would say, because the different online formats, like taking tests online or not online, and some people leaving to go online, and some teachers telling us that we should take classes online. I think if it was more streamlined and just say this week was online testing, I think that would have been easier and just more streamlined, so that's all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, Troy. Luca Gorgish-Feely from Costa Mesa.
Hello Superintendent Lee Sung and board trustees. The following report has been made based on a Google survey with hundred and seventy-four respondents, which is about fifteen to twenty percent of the student body. And it is separated into two parts, the first part is concerning the hybrid learning and its impact in the mental well-being of students, and the second part is concerning the winter break. Students at Costa Mesa High School are enjoying the hybrid learning system so far. Responses from my survey show that students' mental health has improved over, ever since the start of hybrid learning. The majority are saying it is much better compared to online learning as they're able to embed her in person and are able to communicate with their teachers and see their friends. Also, most students feel safe on campus and notice that they're accomplishing more things overall in school. However, some students are noticing that hybrid isn't as beneficial for Zoom users as it is for in-person students. They're noticing that some teachers may only Zoom with the people at home for roughly five to fifteen minutes, after which they let the Zoom students off. And some students also switch to cohort C as they feel that school should still be closed and fully online due to the pandemic. I can account for that because in many of my classes, I have somewhere between five and six people. As for the winter break, there was an overwhelmingly positive response from the student body. The majority of students feel that ending the semester before the winter break eliminates a large chunk of stress and allows them to relax before starting a fresh semester with new topics to learn. They perceive that as an improvement as it allows them to spend more time with their families and less time worried about testing, which also betters their overall mental health. Small things that were pointed out are that some people use this break as a way to study before finals, and that because of how the break is arranged, there's an uneven number of days in each semester, resulting in relatively uneven amount of education in both household and school year, which would probably be more, it would probably have more of an impact on classes that are only one semester long, like AP Macroeconomics and AP Government. Also, students pointed out the extra stress that would go on the shoulders of teachers as they need to cram all of the grades and final assignments in, into the gradebook before break starts. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Luca. Next, we have Brittany Ebergenoi from Estancia High School.
Hello, so in regards to the new, to the break that's happening, Estancia students are excited. As you know, as every other school, we've been through a lot this year with a roller coaster of things happening, and the much-needed break that winter break is going to give us is really needed, and we're, we're so excited for a fresh new start. As you know, Estancia is by a four-by-four schedule, so it's a little different. And instead of the second semester being a continuation of the classes we have been taking, this coming semester, we will be taking half of the, the other half of our classes. So let's say if we had science this semester, but not history, next semester, we will be having history. And we feel that this is going to be like a fresh start, if that makes sense, because we are going to be shifting not only in our schedules, but we will be seeing new teachers and we will be in new environments. And apart from that, like Troy said, this was a little different because we did start school in August. And as a fellow, as an AP student, I feel that that has been really helpful to not feel so behind in our classes and our coursework, and I'm very excited for that. I would like to, other than the winter break, I would like to bring my warmest welcome to our newest trustees, Mrs. Wyland, Mrs. Crane, and Mrs. Ursulu. I'm really excited and honored to be learning, and I'm so, so, sorry. I am really excited to be working with you guys and I am so excited to see what I will be learning, thank you so much.
Thank you, Brittany. And finally, we have Bailey Bogard from Newport Harbor High School, who has also been the co-chair presiding over the student board members for the first semester. She will trade off with Troy Saboda from Cronod Omar in January. So Bailey, welcome.
Hi, everyone, thank you for having me, I'm Bailey Bogard from Newport Harbor High School. Along with sharing my deepest welcomes to the new board members here, I'm very excited to also work with you guys and see what I can learn from you all. And so to, in regards to ending school or ending our semester before break, I could say, along with many of my peers, I'm very grateful for this. Being an AP student, being someone who stresses out a lot, I can see this break really benefiting me with hopefully less homework and sort of like a good wrap-up of the year. And so that's pretty much all that I have for you on that, thank you so much, and you guys have a great break.
Thank you, Bailey. Next, we have Harvard Council PTA report, Lisa Bowler.
Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting myself. Good evening, Superintendent Lee Sung, board members and guests. I want to welcome our new, three new trustees. PTA is glad to welcome you. And we were really sorry that Harvard Council PTA was not able to have our annual holiday luncheon this year. As you all know, it would have been last week. And, you know, we missed seeing all of you, you know, the And, um, you know, we missed seeing all of you, you know, the size of a, I don't even know what. A trick or treat candy bar. Um, we're looking forward to seeing all of you again and hopefully the new year. But, um, I want to remind everybody, we're still, um, looking for PTA members. Just because we're under quarantine doesn't mean the PTA isn't out there still doing good for our students. So please go to jointotum.com and, um, you'll see a list of our schools and you're more than welcome to join any or all of them. And I just want to, um, wish everybody a really healthy and relaxing holiday break. And, um, we look forward to seeing you in the new year. Thanks.
Thank you, Lisa, and have a happy holiday. Um, and then we have our association presidents, Pam Saunders from CSEA.
Good evening, President Yelsey, Board Superintendent Lee Sung, Cabinet and Guest. First, thank you for this opportunity from CSEA. First and foremost, we'd like to thank all our classified employees throughout our district. We are very grateful to every classified employee for doing their part and all their hard work. CSEA would like to congratulate and welcome the new board members Carol Crane, Leah Ursulin and Krista Wigan, and we look forward to working with all of you this year. At the very beginning of the pandemic, we were promised that we wouldn't start in-person learning until it was safe to do so for students and staff. And unfortunately, that is not the case. As cases rise and we are in purple tier, it becomes even more important that we close down for everyone's protection. We are still very concerned about the safety of all students and staff at schools and work sites as the number of cases continue to rise. We all hear the news and know that the number of COVID cases are at their highest number of available and of available ICUs beds are at their lowest since the beginning of the pandemic. How long will schools be able to function on hybrid model? As the numbers in our county increase, so do the numbers for our staff. This means there is less staff available to perform their duties. This alone creates an unsafe environment for students as the remaining staff is overworked, stressed and scared. Please consider the safety of your students and staff and return to distance learning until numbers decrease and we can return safely. Please wait until at least we are at 15% ICU capacity. The Central Kitchen for Nutrition Services has closed down to lack of staffing. Bus drivers are being sent home after transporting infected students in closed vehicles. Instructional assistance are being sent home due to sickness in classroom and exposure to COVID. Students are coming to school sick. More parents are keeping their students home as numbers and safety concerns arise. The custodial department has limited resources and staffing. We are happy to report that we are now meeting with Leona Osen every week to discuss our concerns for safety of our staff. We appreciate her time and the improvement in our communication with the district. We also want to thank Leona and her team for passing the CSEA MOU coronavirus MOU. The last, the Classified Summer Assistance Program was denied by the district at a time when our employees really need this benefit as a result of this pandemic. Our district took in millions of dollars and benefited from state support, but now our district wants to deny, deny state support for almost a thousand of its lowest paid employees at such a critical time. CSEA would like the school board to appreciate classified members by supporting the Classified School Employees Summer Assistance Program like other Orange County school districts have done. The deadline is the end of this month for our district to participate in this valuable benefit. The state-funded Summer Saver Program, Senate Bill 75, is a great opportunity for the district to provide NMUSD classified employees with financial stability without impacting the district budget. Please do not shut out employees during this very difficult time. We respectfully ask the district to reconsider supporting classified employees by participating in the Summer Assistance Program. Your support of this program and of your employees is appreciated during this very difficult time. Please consider your decision. Vaccines are be, are beginning to be distributed and there's light at the end of the tunnel. We'd like to remind everyone to wear a mask, social distance during the winter break. As COVID numbers continue to rise, your actions impact everyone around you. In closing, CSEA wishes for all the district employees to have the best holiday they are able. Again, thank you again for this opportunity, CSEA Chapter 18.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Tamara Fairbanks.
Good evening, trustees and welcome our new trustees. Um, one of the, one of the reflexes that I have about this year are the awesome employees that we get to work with. Our 2020 Teachers of the Year are no exception. As mentioned in our earlier board meeting, Susan Stokes was acknowledged as an extraordinary educator by Harley Rada prior to the school beginning. An honor that is fitting for an awesome educator. What the school board does not know is that, uh, our other teacher of the year, Dr. Jacqueline Brown, was slated to be one of the grand marshals at the Newport Beach Boat Parade for their theme, "Supporting Local Heroes." Unfortunately, the boat parade was canceled due to COVID restrictions. However, the city of Newport Beach is, still is acknowledging all of our local heroes and they are, um, creating a video vignette of Dr. Jacqueline Brown and her efforts and her work. And as soon as I receive that, then I will forward that to you, the board, administration and Annette Franco to celebrate, um, that wonderful opportunity that Jacqueline has. Um, our teacher, we are beginning, um, the process of our Teacher of the Year celebration. Um, now that we know that Orange County Board of Ed is actually, um, set forth for the, um, upcoming 2021 school year. And it's an exciting time for us to acknowledge all of our educators. As always, we continue to uplift our employees and support them by resolving safety issues and any issues that they need. We wish for a healthy and safe work environment for all employees, no matter which is on their end, and continue to work with the district in order to do this. With COVID rates surging in our area, it is important to be vigilant in the mitigation of this virus and to, and to strengthen our safety protocols in order to work more effectively. Um, I would be remiss if we did not, um, send our condolences to the Wada family. Um, Greg Wada is a retired teacher, um, an active union member and an incredible person. And our hearts go out to the Wada family at this time, um, at, during this time. Um, during this holiday season, may everyone's family be safe. May everyone's family be healthy and have a good rest and a vacation.
Thank you very much, Tamara. Um, now we move, we have community input on agendized items, but we have our consent calendar first. So do we want to do that?
Correct. Uh, most of the comments are associated with 17C5.
Which is moving to the.
Which is moving to discussion, right.
So do we, we want to do all the comments at one time now?
So I, I think it'd be best to read the comments right before we address that item.
The issue, okay.
And therefore we would move to read, uh, 17C6 in terms of public comment. I think there's one comment.
Okay, Mrs. Matoye, would you like to read the statement?
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda. Each speaker has three minutes of comment time and per board bylaws 209323, there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. In the event, the number of submitted public comments for a topic on the agenda are anticipated to exceed 20 minutes. The order of comments will be read in random order until the 20 minutes have expired. Comments submitted electronically through the links below that are selected will be read into the meeting video record. Regardless of whether comments are read into the video record, all comments received will be submitted to the board. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons submitting comments.
Okay, so.
We have one comment on 17C6 and we'll skip over 17C5 for now. So, Miss Crane?
Yes, this is from Tamara Fairbanks, NMFT. These MOUs is a reflection of the hard work of both NMUSD and NMFT and I stand in support of them.
Okay, thank you. Um, so for the consent calendar, do I have a motion?
To approval of the consent calendar as amended.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any discussion? All right, roll call vote.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Bartow?
Yes.
Trustee Crane? Trustee Ursulou?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Karen, moving back to my superintendent's report before we move on.
It was moved by Ms. Matoye, seconded by Mrs. Ursulou. Um, vote was seven zero. I'm sorry, and we've skipped over item 16, Superintendent. I will move back to Mr. Lee Sung.
Okay, uh, first of all, I want to welcome and congratulate our three new trustees, trustee Ursulou, trustee Wigan and trustee Crane. And I just want to say, uh, I really appreciated, um, spending some time with you to do the swearing in back on Friday and having a chance to meet some of your family and friends. It really was a nice, nice moment for me to see um, the support that you have out there. Uh, and, and the fact that, um, this is really special. And I think it is really special for all three of you, uh, to be stepping up and being part of leadership in education, particularly now in these times, but just at any point. And something that I, I did share that I, I really feel is so critically important is the fact that, um, we are all stewards. We're all stewards of this amazing school district. And I think we're all committed, uh, to do our best to make the school district the best it can be for our community, for our parents and for our students. And, uh, these last couple of weeks, probably more so, we've been spending time together, uh, getting to know each other. Little by little, I'm starting to see where your ideas and priorities would really, uh, blend nicely with the rest of the trustees and we can really do some incredible work here in the district. So to all three of you, welcome aboard and I look forward to working with each of you. And to, uh, President Yelsey, congratulations. Um, I look forward to working with you as well, very closely, um, to, uh, uh, work on our governance team. And this is something that I've heard from so many folks, uh, is how important it is and the commitment that we need to make, uh, to make this governance team work. And I just want you to know, uh, as a superintendent, I, I want to do that. We need to do things better and in some places differently. And the more time we can spend together, uh, the better it will be, not only for our governance team, but also for our entire district and community. Uh, the other thing I want to mention is, uh, gosh, this was maybe a week and a half ago that we were able to participate in a virtual CSBA conference. It's the California School Boards Association Conference. And normally, uh, we're doing this in person, but this year due to the circumstances, we were, uh, online and we did it virtually. Uh, and, uh, uh, my day got, got disrupted because of the smoke and the fire issue. But, uh, we did see some incredible sessions and some incredible speakers. Uh, I know many of you caught the speaker who is the founder of code.org and how, uh, incredibly important those skills are in, in the future of coding for everybody and how he made it accessible. There were some great sessions on equity. And, uh, in the last session was Leslie Odom Jr. from, uh, uh, Hamilton. And I was amazed at how many great points he made, being a, an actor and a singer and a Broadway, uh, star of how that's applicable in everybody's life. So I hope, uh, you all got to see that. That was very inspirational. But we added a component this year with the CSBA conference. We invited our student board members who also participated in sessions. And one of the opportunities I hope we get is to talk to them and listen to some of the ideas that they heard, lessons they learned and how we can, uh, incorporate some of those. Okay, so, so that was a whole nother piece that I'm very proud that our district has, has done. And, uh, the other thing I want to mention is, um, some of the feedback we got from our student board members tonight. Uh, I also posed the question at the student advisory, uh, group meeting, uh, last week and asked the same question and got some additional feedback. And I just want to make the, the connection here of the fact that we really committed and worked hard over a number of years to make this adjustment to the calendar. And we started the school year earlier in August so that we can end first semester now. And I didn't want this moment to be lost in all of the COVID stuff that we've been dealing with. I certainly wanted to hear the feedback from the students. And what I got from the student advisory group and what we heard tonight is the fact that the students really do feel like there's a break. There's an end in sight. They can put their stuff away. They, and I heard reset, reset several times in the student advisory committee, how they felt that they can, they can put some closure, truly get some rest and then reset for the second semester. So I'm glad to hear the feedback has been positive and something that we had hoped that we, we would hear. Oh, and the other, other thing is that, uh, because we started earlier, uh, a couple of students reported how they weren't hearing that, oh, we gotta, we gotta keep learning. We gotta keep cramming over the break, particularly in the AP classes. So they, they really do feel, uh, a difference there, at least the ones that had communicated to us. So anyways, I wanted to make sure that connection was being made. Uh, the next thing is I can't believe that we're at a semester, that half the year has gone by. And, uh, as we're approaching the holidays and we are looking at the COVID numbers and all of that, uh, I, I do want to acknowledge the fact that we are absolutely monitoring what's going on. And we are doing everything possible to keep, uh, our schools open, to keep in-person learning going and keeping everybody safe. And there's a lot of staff members who are putting in a lot of time, a lot of hours. We're making adjustments. We're providing substitutes when people have to stay home. Uh, so we're doing everything possible to commit to, uh, our in-person and our hybrid model right now. But we are absolutely following what's going on and we'll make adjustments if necessary. Uh, and then finally, just with the, uh, with the holidays, uh, this certainly is a time that we all need to take some rest. We need to take care of ourselves. We need to, uh, have some joy in terms of spending time with our family, with our friends, but to do so safely. So with that, I wish everybody a very happy holidays. Get some rest. We'll reset and we'll come back for second semester. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee Sung. And that goes for you and the staff as well to take a rest and recharge and enjoy some time with your families. Okay, now we'll move on to the discussion action calendar and we'll take the comments as we discuss the item. So we'll start with 18A. There are no comments. Overview for Parents and the First Internment Report of the District's Financial Status. And, um, I, I'll turn this over to Mr. Holcomb, Mr. Trader and Mr. Gailey, but I want to thank you in advance for spending time with each of us to answer our questions, go over the presentation. Um, it was very much appreciated. So we didn't ask thousands of questions tonight.
Thank you, Board President Yelsey. Ms. Gailey, I believe, is available and this is primarily, I'm on the, no, pull my mic down. I apologize. He, he caught me at that last meeting too. I will learn. At any rate, uh, Ms. Gailey is available with us and, uh, she has a presentation where she can walk us through uh, the update for parents.
Um, Mr. Holcomb, I believe, uh, Mr. Trader was going to go first.
So good evening. It's good to be here with you tonight. Vanessa Galey and I will be presenting together. And we trust that you enjoyed all of the pleasure reading material we sent you recently. So let's jump into this. We're discussing both the first interim report and the budget overview for parents. And so first interim, what is it? Well, it's required by law. Education Code four two one three oh and AB twenty seven fifty six indicates that we have to certify our financial condition twice a year. And includes changes in the budget from July to August thirty first. And it also includes a multi-year forecast, and it certifies the district's ability to meet its financial obligations. Let's look and see where we're at in terms of the financial cycle. We adopted our budget back in June. The state adopted theirs in July. We brought to you our unaudited actuals in September. Here we are tonight with our December first interim report. The things that we have coming up are the governor will release his budget proposal in January for twenty one twenty two. We will come to you in March with our second interim report. The governor then will release his May revised budget in May, and then we will bring you a budget proposal in June. That's where we're at in the reporting cycle. Let's take a look at a slide that we saw at the first interim in last year that was presented to the board on December tenth, two thousand nineteen. And this was a slide. And who would ever think that there would be a pandemic in the wings? I mean, it was unbelievable. Nobody would ever thought that. At the time, we thought, well, the, the economic cycle is coming to its end, and, and so we would need to be prepared for some slower growth. But instead, we, we got a pandemic. And so it's just a lesson. It's a cautionary tale to be prudent in our decisions, and you have been. And as a result, we were well-prepared for the pandemic. So let's, let's take a look at the proposed budget revisions. And so a lot has happened. And I want to let you know that these revisions are, they're abnormal. This is not our normal pattern. What you're seeing here is very, very different than, than what we have seen in, in past years. So let's, let's talk about revenue. So revenue increased dramatically. Here we are at June adoption. And state aid, state aid increased by about fifteen point five million. And that is because we started the year thinking that the state was going to reduce by ten percent. And so we correspondingly made reductions to our budget. And, and then the state reversed course, completely did a one eighty, and said that they were going to do that with cash deferrals. And so we're seeing here an increase in state aid. And then we had the federal folks come in, and they provided us with the CARES Act. And that was about thirteen point seven million. And then we've got the state learning loss mitigation funding provided, and that's about another one point seven million. And then our property taxes have held strong, and so it's been a, a good thing. And so we've increased our property tax revenue by two point three million. And that was, by the way, offset by about a half a million for the Isaac Charter. We made a correction there. And then there's a slight increase for, and this is kind of a normal at this time of year for community support. So with that, then, though, it's always nice to have increasing revenue. However, our expenditures are also increasing dramatically. So here we are at June adoption. And because of COVID, we've had to do some things that are very different. Normally, we aren't adding boatloads of staffing at this time of year, but we are this year. And so staffing has increased fairly dramatically. We've had to increase. We also came to some agreements with our bargaining units for cost of living adjustments. We've had to purchase a lot of supplies, PPE, filters, you name it. We've, we've, we've bought it. And then we've had to increase our contract services and communication stipends to respond to COVID. And it's been a challenge. Part of this money is in the learning loss mitigation money, and that's made up of three funding streams. There's a Corona relief, general fund relief, and the governor's emergency relief fund. And those things all are helping us to mitigate learning loss. And some of the things that we're, that are included in that are, excuse me, the campus, or I'm sorry, staffing. We've included a new campus, entire new campus, cloud camp, cloud campus, connectivity access, which includes laptops, hotspots, Chromebooks, iPads, webcams, document cameras, professional development associated with distance learning, digital platforms, additional school facilitator support, additional behavior specialists, additional counselors, additional ed tech, TOSs, psychologists, summer programs, and various intervention staffing, including credit recovery, hourly intervention teachers for small group instruction. And so there's a lot going on with this. We've been really challenged to respond appropriately, and we are. The next item is other financing uses increased. And this is a, here we are, June adoption. And then we're going to add in some transfers. We made a transfer to the stabilization account to Fund seventeen. And then we've also added some additional support for our restricted programs, including special education, transportation, and nutrition services. And then our ending fund balance also increased. And here we are at June adoption. And we're adding about seven point nine million on the unrestricted balance. And that's primarily to assist with cash flow requirements, which we'll talk about in a minute. And then we're also adding three and a half million on the restricted side. And that's really to cover some restricted obligations that actually occurred last year. So with that, then, let's look at our multi-year outlook. Revenue is really modestly increasing. If you look at that line, it's nice. It's up and to the right. That's a pleasant line to look at. And it's really about property tax and federal revenues. There's the, the orange line. That's your property tax eleven line. Here's the federal line. You see the little bump there in, in this year. And then, of course, you have state, which is primary, primarily flat, and then our other local. So even though revenues is moderately increasing, and that is good news, we are still challenged to align our expenditures with our revenue. Here's our revenue line. Again, that's a very pleasant line to look at, up and to the right. Everything looks great. However, when we include the expense line, you can see there, we are challenged to keep that expense line below the revenue line. And, and that's primarily, we're stretching to meet your priorities. We've had multiple curriculum adoptions, air conditioning, site facility, safety, security enhancements, and socio-emotional learning, learning needs, COVID nineteen. There's been a lot going on. And so as you, as you walk the sites, and you find projects that are of unspeakable value, you'll want to remember what someone's said before is that you can do anything you want. You just can't do everything you want. So with that, then, let's talk a little about some of our challenges. Employer pension rates are increasing. We did get a reprieve this year. The governor, that was very welcomed and helpful. However, you'll look in the out years, those rates are really moving up, and they're moving up fast. And in, by twenty twenty four, CalPERS is scheduled to increase by six point six percent or three point eight million. And CalSTRS is going to increase one point nine five percent to two point eight million. That's an incremental increase. Those are fairly large numbers. And, and what's happening here, these increases are increasing faster. So pensions are increasing faster than our revenue increase. And as a result of that, there's going to be a, a crowding out of alternatives. And so when you look at this, the blue bars is, are the dollars, and that red line is the percent of budget. And so you can see that in the out years, and, and historically, pensions are starting to, they're consuming more of the budget, more of the pie. And as a result, some things are going to get crowded out. At least, we, we don't want that to happen. So we're going to have to be really careful about how we do this. When you look at in thirteen fourteen, pensions consumed about five point five percent of our budget. And in twenty two twenty three, they will consume almost twelve percent of our budget. So it's something we're watching and we're being careful about. Another concern we have is cash deferrals. Here's a slide from the California Legislative Analyst Office, and this is just taken in October twenty ninth, two thousand twenty. And this is, this portrays eleven point one billion dollars the state withholding cash from school districts. That is a huge number. And it's something where we, it appears that the state is going to use this mechanism when they get in trouble. And, and I guess it's a little bit of a, it's a bittersweet kind of thing where, yes, we, we don't get the cuts, but at the same time, we have to watch our cash, and the state could move very quickly on these kinds of things and take a whole lot of money out of the system. And so we have to be cognizant of that, and, and that there's some volatility out there that we need to be careful about. And here's the actual impact on cash. So this is the chart that shows our cash low point. Meaning, this is kind of like your cash deficit. If you were looking at your account, this is how much money you'd have to get to, to get to zero. And so when we look at our low point, now, this includes all of the CARES Act funding and no cash deferrals. So this is the fun bus scenario, this one here. And so when you look at this in sixteen seventeen, you'll see here that progressively, we're consuming more cash. And this, if you remember, we have a cash dry period between July and December. And this is the period that we're most concerned about. And you see here that we're, even in the, in the fun bus scenario, we're consuming more cash. Now, this year in two thousand twenty one, because of the CARES Act funding and those kinds of things, it's a little bit off. It's looking very good. But when you take into the next year, then we're at about thirty million. Going into, and if you look at a scenario that assumes full implementation of deferrals, you see here that we get to close to forty million dollar negative amount. And so we watch that. We need to make sure we keep appropriate cash balances on hand to do that. The only way to, to get around that is to borrow externally. And that is expensive, and takes a lot of effort to attorneys and money changers and those kinds of folks to make all that happen. So then let's talk about then our ending fund balance. And you see here in that grade out portion, that's grading out the nineteen twenty unaudited actuals and the twenty twenty one adopted budget. And you're going to see a lot of variability here. And you would normally not see this kind of variability. But it has to do with COVID and, and all of the uncertainty that we were experiencing at that time. You know, the state was saying crazy things, you know, that we were gonna, you know, the, the cuts could be as much as twenty percent. And, and there, there was a lot of uncertainty at that time. And so you're going to see here, our ending fund balance is kind of moving around. But you wouldn't, we wouldn't normally have that. But the, the key is, is we're striving to achieve an ending fund balance in reserves, that includes reserves of a recommended seventeen percent. And the, and the, and the good news is, is that we're just about there. When you look at our reserves, they're approaching best practice. Here are the dollar amounts. And when you put that against the percentage of budget, there we are with, as a percent of budget. And then you bring in the standard, and then we're very, very, we're just about there to the standard. And so that's, that's really excellent news. The district hasn't been there ever since I've been here for twenty three years. It's quite an accomplishment. And it's a wonderful thing. So anyway, summarizing some thoughts here, the state budget is improving, but it's volatile. And expenditures are increasing dramatically. We're stretching to meet board-directed priorities. However, we're financially positioned very well to handle COVID uncertainty. And with that, then, we recommend a positive certification. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Vanessa Galey.
Hi, good evening. So I have the distinct pleasure of partnering with Mr. Trader on all things LCAP, Local Control and Accountability Plan. And typically, we do our presentations together in June, but you're seeing us together tonight in December. So as you see in the board item, the budget overview for parents has to be approved at the same time as the first interim budget is presented. And so we want to point out a couple of contextual items. In a typical year, we develop our, our local control funding formula, budget overview, in conjunction with our district plan, which is usually called the Local Control and Accountability Plan. And typically, it's due by July first of each year. So we'll present it at the beginning of June for public comment, and then at the end of June for approval. But in two thousand twenty twenty one, this year, the deadlines changed. The change of the adoption date was moved to on or before today, December fifteenth, so we're right on time. And districts have to, as I said, adopt that budget overview in conjunction with the first interim report. LEA stands for Local Educational Agency, and that's a synonym for district. Next slide, please. So at this point, I want to make sure that we remind everyone about our local context. Newport Mesa is unique in that we're one of a few districts in, in the state that is a community-funded or also known as a basic aid district. And essentially, what this means is that we rely on our local property taxes as our primary source of funds, whereas most other districts, the tip, the funds typically flow through the state and then back down to the district. And so in most districts, their general fund is called Local Control Funding Formula. And then the, the general piece of it is the base, and that is a simple dollar amount that every student gets, that you get for every student in the district. And then on top of that, there's a supplemental grant, and that's additional funding based on the number of high-need students. And those are identified as English learner, low-income foster youth, and then also our homeless kids. And then the way that the funding mechanism works, again, in most other districts, is that you, you get the, the dollars based on an unduplicated count. And what that basically means is any child, even if they're high needs in multiple categories, is only counted once for funding purposes. Now, in Newport Mesa, we are held to a similar standard in that we have a count of unduplicated students, and we have a target set, but we do not receive additional funds. So we take our local proper property taxes. We look at our target, and then we sequester those funds into that proper bucket so that we're still meeting the intents and purposes. And when we write the Local Control and Accountability Plan, it's with that intention in mind. Next slide, please. Thank you. So in the, the budget overview for parents, what parents will see is this visual with a little introduction. And I want to state a disclaimer that we have a state template, and there's not too many adjustments we can make to the state template. So we cannot adjust the prompts. We just have a little bit of flexibility in the narrative that we, we can provide. So we, we show here a budget overview. So we, we show here a budget overview that is a compliment to the great work that Mr. Trader and his team provide. And what it shows you is the different pieces of the pie that, that the district would receive for this current school year. So when you're looking at our budget picture, the big blue pie and then all the little pieces of the pie are, are some of the components that Mr. Trader was referring to. The federal CARES fund, the, the additional money that we receive to support distance learning and hybrid learning in this time. We have other federal funds that we always typically get. These are titles one, two, three, and four. Other local funds and then state funds, and those are different pieces than compared to our LCFF funds. And so when you look at the gray pie, the gray two pieces make up the blue portion. So in that you have the other general fund for us, and then you have this tiny, not tiny, but smaller piece, the supplemental. In our district, we would not have qualified for a concentration grant anyway. That's when you have a concentration of 55% or higher of the, the students with high needs. So in our district, if we were another district, we would have received 14,890,989. But in our district, we take our own proper property tax dollars and we sequester those funds and we write toward those goals. So when you look at what we, what we typically do around the planning, again, this is an atypical year. So for 2021, we wrote a, a new plan called the Learning Continuity Plan. And for this year only, it replaced the Local Control and Accountability Plan, affectionately known as the LCAP. The district's Learning Continuity Plan was approved on September 15th. It outlines the actions and services unique to this time, some of which we outline as specific toward the needs of low income Yale foster youth homeless and other ones that just concentrate on the overall needs and response to COVID. So the Learning Continuity Plan did replace the LCAP for this year. And the intention was to really outline the unique things that we had to plan in terms of the high quality education, recognizing all remote and hybrid and hopefully eventually face-to-face learning again. And 100%, uh, social emotional support again to this unique time and then outlining our, our nutrition supports for students as during, during the COVID-19 pandemic. Anyone who's interested in seeing the Learning Continuity Plan, if you go to our LCAP page, Local Control and Accountability Plan, we have our L Learning Continuity Plan listed there in English and in Spanish. Next slide, please. So another component of the parent budget overview is this visual. And in the original document, you'll see the green and the peach boxes. And we have augmented it for the slides to show an additional layer, which is our Local Control Funding Formula target. And so what we're trying to show here is within the Learning Continuity Plan, it doesn't outline the whole overall budget. It doesn't encompass the over 300 million dollars in our regular budget. It focuses on just the specific circumstances of, of COVID-19. And so in addition to that, we outline those high needs expenditures at a million 557,000. But we don't want anyone to think that we have taken our eye off the ball of the supports that we would normally provide to the tune of that 14,890,000. And so there are other things that we continue to do that although not outlined as line items in the Learning Continuity Plan, we do mention in the essay at the end. And again, these are things that are, are not our regular cost of doing business, but the, the targeted supports that we've provided over time that we are leveraging to support our neediest kids. So some of those things are some of our district certificated and, and classified staffing. We've augmented that especially with our intervention staffing and especially for this year, we've truly increased that, especially at our elementary sites. We've accelerated that Chromebook asset access, as Mr. Trader mentioned, supplemental nutrition services, additional support for mental health. And again, these are supports that we were already in place and had already been supplemental in nature. And again, weren't really outlined as line items in our original plan. We have translation and interpretation services. We have welcome center activities, including our, our initial LPAC assessment. That's for our English learners. We have a robust system for our school community facilitators and they provide our community connections. We have middle and high school intervention sections and high school credit recovery. We have an ROP agreement with Coastline that we're very proud of. And of course, the services we provide through early college, high school, which has a high concentration of our needy students. So that is the, the, the services from the 2021 year. And then also many of the same services that we provided in 1920. And so the last visual that you see in the parent budget, budget overview, again, we've replicated for you here. In the original, it has the light blue and the light green, and we have added the green, the dark green with the LCFF target. And what we want to highlight here is that in the, the LCAP written for the 1920 school year, the target that we Newport Mesa set for ourselves in terms of spending for our high need students was 17,530,702. In the actuels, when it all shakes out and we look what was spent, we see that we spent 16,531,845. And in the end, what we want to recall is that the actual LCFF target, if we would have received money, was 16,94,106. And so in terms of actual dollars, we exceeded the, the LCFF target by a good amount, around $400,000. Although we did fall short of what we had anticipated we were going to spend. And what we want to emphasize is that our students were absolutely served. It was an atypical year last year and as of March, things did not go according to our original plan. And so a lot of the variations had to do with some of the challenges of just, there's a budget and then there's an actual. There's the school closures. We had some adjustments to staffing, some positions that ended up not being filled. And then some multi-agency agreements, like the ROP agreement that was renegotiated. And we also had some purchases that crossed fiscal years that we purchased in 1819. We didn't purchase that in 1920, but we purchased it July 1 of 2021. So we still bought that curriculum. We still provided the staffing. We did have some adjustments along the way, but for the most part, we saw that the differences were budgetary in nature. And for anyone who reads the report, page five outlines a number of the differences, including some of the staffing positions and things just that are very common sense, like SAT didn't happen, so SAT prep didn't happen. We didn't have college visits in the spring. We didn't have the transportation costs associated with professional development. So a, a lot of the things that we planned did not go according to plan because of COVID. But absolutely, we still provided intervention. We still provided a high quality education. And we're, we're very proud of the, the supports that we have in place. And we're, we're proud of all that we're going to continue on behalf of all of our students and especially our high need students.
So with that, then we appreciate your time and we'll take any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions from the board? Ms. Barto?
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you for those excellent reports. Mr. Trader, I attended a, hi, it's really weird. I attended a school board session on fiscal responsibility COVID related. And one point that they made again and again, which is really strange to me, and I'm hoping you can help me understand, is how they felt that this time was a time to work on less reserves and spend it more in the present. And to me, that's counterintuitive to like our financial situations that we might be facing. But I'm wondering if that information is related to the fact that we're basic aid and therefore we have a stronger pool of money. What, I mean, it's asking a lot of speculation, but can you maybe, you maybe have heard why people feel that way?
Yeah, that's, um, you know, when, when we're stressed in, in trying to make everything happen, we would expect that, that reserves would go down. In our situation, we, we're going to have a lot more flexibility going into next year to be able to do the things that we need to do. We're doing a lot this year and we were very lucky in that our property taxes held up very, very well. And in addition, the state reverse course didn't do the cuts that they, they did. And so even though we're spending a lot more money, we also got money from the federal folks too. We've been able to meet our, our, our demands and also fortify the, the reserves. And, and that's a good thing because that's going to be more flexibility for the next year.
Additionally, the state has what they call a windfall this year for the budget and they're talking about how they're going to use that and how they might send some towards education. And we'll know more, I think in January, what they plan to do. And do we have any plans regarding to put into the budget for student achievement or those kinds of things for learning loss due to the good financial position we're in?
So you're right, the state came out just a very, a couple of weeks ago, indicating that they might be able to take back all of the cash deferrals. It remains to be seen if they're going to do that, given the volatility that we're experiencing, especially now with the shutdown of everything. So we hope that they can do that. If that's the case, then that will be, we won't get any more funding, but our cash, our cash position will, will be helpful. That will be helped out in that.
Thank you. And then I had one other question because I've been getting so many questions about nutrition services. I wondered if Vanessa, you wanted to speak to that or Mr. Trader or Mr. Lee Sung regarding how the nutrition services and COVID and federal grants impact that for our district specifically?
Okay, I, I'm, is this a funding question in terms of how the nutrition services is funded?
Yes. So we've got nutrition services extended. Free and reduced lunch and you don't need to apply and it's extended through June 30th, 2021, I believe.
Okay.
And I know a significant portion of our budget is that nutrition services. So I wanted to just get a little better understanding of how that federal money impacts what we're offering through June 30th, our percentage of what we're putting into that. And I believe we are required to provide that. So I wanted to know how that impacts us financially.
Okay. I'm going to defer, since that's a funding question, I'm going to defer to Mr. Trader on that. And I'm, I'm sure he'll be able to answer most of those questions. If it gets into any more details in terms of the operations, that would have to be maybe a director of our nutrition services. But Mr. Trader, can you answer some of those questions regarding the funding?
Yes. So you're correct in the the rule allowing us to, or make, how, how we have to provide free lunches through June 30th, 2021. That's correct. And as a result, a lot of that's a function of participation, how much we're selling because we have a lot of fixed costs in nutrition services. And so as our revenue goes down, we still have this high cost that we have to maintain to try to, to make all of that happen. And as a result, we do expect encroachment to go up this year, about 40 cents on the dollar. But that will ride itself going into the new year of 2122.
Will that ride itself due to the way we're budgeting or due to the federal funding or just as we enter a new fiscal year and we anticipate returning a little bit more to normal?
As we, as we return to normal, does the, the participation rates in terms of the, the revenue side will go up? And so it will largely ride itself.
Thank you.
Is that all, Mrs. Barto? Okay, Mrs. Anderson?
Thank you. Mr. Trader, would you help me understand? So I see that we moved 2.9 million from the general fund to Fund 17. And I'm wondering why we moved it to the reserve endowment and not the risk management portion?
So Fund 17 has three buckets in it. The first bucket is the endowment. That's the Irvine Endowment. The second one is a, a skip risk management fund, and that's to help us to cover things that our insurance may not cover when we experience a loss. And the third thing is that just a general stabilization account. And so what you're seeing there is we made a transfer of 12.9 million from the general fund to the general stabilization account in Fund 17. And that's to primarily give us some flexibility for next year and also provide us with some cash flow needs in case we need that in, during our cash dry period.
Thank you. And then I had one more question too about the transportation home to school. And looking at the previous years, that number was going down. And then for last year, it looked like there was, or this year, there's growth of 1.6, but we have a lot less transportation home to school this year because it's separate from the special education side of transportation. So I'm wondering how that amount is higher now when we have less transportation for elementary and high school for general ed?
So you're right, the, there is those two, the transportation is split into two buckets, so to speak. We have home to school transportation and special ed transportation. And right now, we currently, we're looking at support for home to school transportation of 4.4 million and special ed transportation of three and a half million. We're, we're budgeting from the perspective of right now, at least of having a full, like running as if we were all in session, that kind of thing. At second interim, we may look at adjusting those budgets.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Is that all, Ms. Anderson? Are there any other comments, questions? Trustee?
This question is for Ms. Galey. In regards to your previous presentation, would you mind defining for the public your definition of high needs?
Yes, it's actually state defined. So it's low income, English learner, foster youth. We don't get an additional fund for the homeless students, but we have accountability requirements on behalf of them. So we typically include them in our count. But by definition, low income and homeless, they, they're synonymous, the way that they're counted. But we want to make sure that we're including the fact that we're accountable for our homeless students, even if they're a very small student group. And so, so that's the state definition.
Thank you.
Trustee Ursule?
Hi, thank you so much for those, those detailed presentations. I had a follow-up on trustee Barto's question about nutrition. So can you clarify for the public right now? The free lunches are provided to anyone in the district regardless of income. Is that a federal mandate?
Yes.
And that goes through June?
Yes, June 21.
And the one, roughly 1.7 million that we used to receive from sales of lunch, that's what it looked like in the budget. Where is that being covered from exactly? During this tricky time where we don't have lunch sales?
So that, that, that means greater support for our nutrition services area from our general fund.
So it's from the general fund?
Correct.
And, and then I had questions on, and I apologize for my naivete. We got about 700 pages to read through at noon on Friday. So I did my best. But I have questions about those, they look like infrastructure funds. And there's a few of them. There's Fund 21, 25, 39, and 40. And so my questions are, are going to focus on, on that. I'm trying to figure out for the fund of 40, it seems like there's a safety and security line of 6 million. And I'm trying to figure out what that is going toward, what that is intended for.
The, the district has, is planning on several safety and security enhancements at the sites. And Mr. Holcomb may want to provide some additional color to that.
So the district has put, the board has put priorities for safety and security over many years now. It started with elementary schools and most recently security projects at the Ensign Intermediate School and Corona Del Mar High School and Middle School Projects. So these are the funds that the district has historically in Fund 40 budgeted to maintain its ongoing commitment to security and safety projects in the district.
And what is the nature of those, those projects? Is this for cameras, for lighting or?
Yes, it is, it is. Yes, I understand your question. No, it is not cameras and lighting. It has historically been largely perimeter fencing and reconfiguring entries so that we have them properly situated to keep the public and students separated.
Okay, so it's primarily for fencing, that $6 million?
That's correct.
Okay, great. And another issue is Mr. Lee Sung had mentioned the CSBA conference, which was really enlightening and I'm really glad that the, as a new trustee, we got to attend that. So one of the panels that I had the privilege of attending was on indoor air quality and that's where I learned from our CSBA folks that the ASHRI recommendations, as well as the CDC recommendations are for HVAC systems to have a MERV 13 filtration. That's recommended for schools, which is really great because, I mean, any of you that worked in offices in the eighties and nineties, you remember sick building syndrome and and what happens when you're working in a, in an unhealthy air environment. So getting to MERV 13 for our schools seems like a no brainer. So especially given COVID and given just the nature of having kids there all day, that's where they spend most of their time. They should have great air quality. In the budget, I'm trying to figure out where that, those funds are coming from. In Fund 40, it had a 17 million for 1920, which I was told was for the air conditioning. And then for the 2021, there is, seems to be about 10 million or 11 million. And I'm curious, which part of that is going to be used for these MERV systems? Have they already been paid for? Or do we have a projected budget of how much we're still missing or still in need of to get all of our schools up to great air quality standards?
So those are out of the general fund, the, the MERV filter upgrades. Fund 40 is, doesn't include any of the upgrades for filters.
Okay, and how much have we spent, everything that we need? Where, where can I find that information that you're saying from the general fund? Are 50% of our schools there? Are 90% of our schools there? I'm just trying to figure out where we're at and how much more we need to budget for that.
In, in answer to your question, the, the district, as it has been installing and upgrading HVAC systems, has been following the most recent code. The most recent projects, the ones that were completed this summer included MERV 13. The projects that were completed prior to that were not MERV 13. Some of the units can potentially be retrofitted with MERV 13, but our standard in responding to COVID was to always increase the standard of filtration at every unit in the district. And most of them were at a MERV 8 and have been replaced with a MERV 11. And as Mr. Trader mentioned, all of that has been done in the district's general fund category for maintenance. In fact, that was done in September and is currently ongoing in the replacement of the filters again, since they were originally replaced back in September.
Great, great, thank you. And my final question is about that same Fund 40. Because I'm trying to figure out the, it looks like there is 6 million there for the Estancia Theater. And I'm curious as to, I thought it was the Measure F money that covered the Estancia Theater. So this looks like an additional 6 million. And I'm just curious why it's there and not from the other fund that was the Measure F?
Yes, so the theater itself is funded by Measure F. What we found was that, as often happens when we make a modification at a campus, there are related portions of the campus that it's immediately adjacent to that would be best suited to make an improvement with as well. So for example, the site work that is immediately adjacent to the theater is part of the theater budget from Measure F. The, there is additional site work that is contemplated to improve that entire front area, which is being funded from these funds. Those are the types of things that you would see in this fund.
Great, thank you so much. This is helpful. So if a parent is curious about what MERV filtration their particular school has, who would they be contacting to find that, to see that list of who's at an 11, who's at a 13?
Mr. Holcomb, do you want to respond to that? Who would be best? The site, I don't know if the site principal has that information or if that would be something that would have to come to our maintenance office?
Yes, actually it would need to come to our maintenance office so that they can pursue those details.
Okay, because I get asked that a lot, believe it or not.
Generally, generally, the answer is that our schools have MERV 11 filters. That was what was communicated out to the schools and to our associations about what was being done. Those were the filters that were upgraded in September. So very generally, the answer is it has at least a MERV 11 filter and there are some brand new units that have MERV 13 filters.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions, comments? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we adopt the first interim report of the budget and the LCP portion that goes along with it.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
Who is that?
Krista.
It's hard to hear, right?
The mouse moved.
Moved by trustee Matoye, seconded by trustee Wigan. Roll call vote, please.
Student Board Member Paulina Enriquez Vazquez.
I'm here. Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Cray?
Yes.
Trustee Ursula? Trustee Ursula?
Yes?
Yes. Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
And trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, I want to thank Jeff Trader and Vanessa Galey for really a wonderful report and really answering all our questions. And as I've told all the new trustees, they are there to answer your questions whenever you have them and they're very receptive to that. So take advantage of it when you need it. Moving on to 18B, accept financial audit reports for fiscal year 2019, 2020. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you, President Yelsey. We have our auditors here this evening to, to go over the report with you. I will introduce Mr. Trader to introduce our auditors to you. Thank you.
So tonight, it's a pleasure to introduce Andrew Park, who is with ID Bailey. And I always like to remind the board that the auditors report directly to you, even though staff works very closely with them. We have a great relationship with them. They report directly to you. And so that's a, that's a great thing. So we'll turn the time over here to Mr. Andrew Park. I don't see Andrew. See?
Okay, maybe we can move on to the next item and come back to this one. Oh. Oh, there we go.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, perfect. Wow, sorry about that. I, I just kind of hung out for a little too long. I kind of started at the beginning. I just came in as a test. But yeah, I mean, the common theme this year has been an unusual year. And I'd like to kind of begin by, it certainly has been an unusual year for the audit side as well. So I would have to say, from a servicing standpoint, the audit function works with the district's management, who is delegated to prepare the financial statements for you. And I service about 30 school districts this year and I have to say that Newport Mesa is one of the few districts that we're issuing in December. In a typical year, we would, we were required to issue all reports by December 15th. And again, I think it's a testament to your management's cooperation in terms of working with us. Okay, so I'd like to thank Mr. Trader and his group. We're just really working with us and it's been a tough year, but, but it went smoothly unexpectedly. So before I begin, I'd like to kind of preface in terms of what we are. We're commonly known as auditors and there's a lot of misconceptions in terms of what auditors are. So within the scope of a school district audit, my responsibility to the board is primarily to report back on the unotted actuals that was presented in September. Okay, those are basically the year-end financial statements of the school districts. And my primary responsibility is to report back to the board and let you know that, are those numbers as reported, are they accurate or in the term of an audit, are they reasonably stated? Okay, that's really my job to you. The common misconception that we hear from the public is, we're your fraud auditors. No, we're not. That's, that's really not our job. We're also auditing your budget. No, we don't. Why, why aren't we auditing the budget, budget? Because it's a subjective criteria. It's not an objective. You and I would have a difference in opinion in terms of how a budget should be built and we can't use a subjective criteria to audit something. So there's no way we could do that. But we do come in as the, I would hate to use this term, but as a janitorial crew in terms of looking at the year-end numbers because those are now, the numbers have taken place and now they're auditable and these are all objective measures that I could kind of perform audit procedures on. Okay, so with that, let's kind of go into some of the audit specific definitions. So again, our job is to provide assurance on a set of financial statements. In this case, it's June 30, it's as of June 30, 2020. And as far as assurance is concerned, we render scaling opinions. Okay, there is a varying level of opinion that we would render on a set of financial statements. Again, this, this is kind of really key to understanding what auditors do. Highest level of assurance that we would render on a set of financial statement is what we would call an unmodified opinion, followed by a qualified opinion and lastly, a disclaimer or an adverse opinion. Okay? And what you're looking for is the term unmodified. So within the scope of an audit, all auditors use a standard language. Okay, and it's a templated language as far as the financial statements are concerned and it's very specific. Now, if you're interested in, in terms of, you know, knowing what that is, on the audit report, it's going to start on page two. Okay, on page two of the audit report, the, the top paragraph of the report, if it's a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion, it would always say in any audit report that you would read, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above presented fairly in all material respects. Okay? If you see a qualification or a disclaimer, there's going to be additional sentences. It would follow that sentence and it would say, except for, you know, whatever we don't agree with. And then after that, there will be following paragraphs kind of describing what we don't agree with. Now, in this case, unfortunately, I don't have it with me and we can't really walk through the audit report that like I normally do. But if you were to refer to the audit report, it kind of stops there and effectively, we did issue a clean opinion or an unmodified opinion for the financial statements as of June 30, 2020 for Newport Mesa Unified School District. Okay, so that's the financial piece of it. Now, Newport Mesa being a governmental entity, we're also required to follow what's called a government auditing standards and Newport is also subject to what's called a single auditor uniform guidance, which is the federal compliance requirement and also a state compliance requirement. Again, we don't have it in front of me, but you know, for reference purposes, the results of that audit is going to be on page 99 of the actual audit report, the primary audit report, if you're curious. On page 99 is what we would call summary of auditor's results. Now, actually, in, in actuality, if you really want to understand how the audit went, you would just refer to this page and you're going to look for, again, the, the common term, unmodified opinion, which is synonymous with a clean opinion. And then you're going to look for any yeses on control deficiencies. Okay, so without me going into too much detail, as part of the, the bigger scheme of audit of things, right, audit is really not literally tracing one number to another number. It's really under, understanding a system of what we would call internal controls, right? A lot of our financial transactions are processed via a, a system, a general ledger system, a payroll system and whatnot. And I would say about 70% of our audit is spent on understanding how that process works. In essence, what are we trying to answer? If the dollar gets processed within your system, does that dollar get translated into another dollar on the financial statement itself? And if that flow of information is correct, everything is working as intended and is designed properly. If it is not, and if there's a problem, if that dollar is put into the system and it's only, it only reports 70 cents, now we have a problem. And that's what we would call a degree, depending on the magnitude of the degree, we would call that a control deficiency within your system of internal controls. In this report, as of June 30, 2020, we did not identify any type of control weaknesses in terms of your checks and balances that have been implemented to ensure that your, your financial statements are fairly stated. Okay? That is what we would call a report on internal controls. This is required under government auditing standards, which is issued by the federal government and it's simply a report. We're basically saying there either, there either is a, is an issue with internal controls or there isn't. And in this case, there is no issue. Second header that you see on this page is labeled federal awards. So federal awards is synonymous with single audit or uniform guidance audits. Okay, and what triggers that is if any entity, private, you know, nonprofit governmental, if any entity spends in excess of $750,000 annually, this audit is triggered and the federal government looks upon independent, independent auditors like myself to go in and perform very specific audit procedures. In the current year, based on our assessment, so just to give you an idea, the district spent $14.2 million in federal awards during 1920. Obviously, that would trigger what we would call this federal compliance requirement and we were required to audit this. And there's a whole systematic way in terms of how we select our programs in terms of what programs to, to audit. And if I were to estimate how many programs that district would receive from a variety of federal grants and, and funding, I would say about 25 programs or so. Okay? Out of the 25 programs, we were required to audit your Title I Part A funds, which is funds designated for low income students. Okay, these are funds specifically earmarked to, to assist with your, the education and the support of your low income students. So based on the audit procedures performed on Title I, we did not identify any type of compliance related matters that we have to report to the board. We also did not identify any type of control deficiencies that are in place to ensure that the district remains compliant with these federal requirements. Okay? And then lastly, on this page, of course, you don't have it in front of me, of you, but lastly, on this page, you would see a header called state compliance. State compliance is kind of a unique. State compliance is kind of a unique item. This is the most evolving item that we kind of deal with on an annual basis. Now, state compliance items are basically, it's regulated by a series of audit guide. So literally, State Controller's Office and the California Department of Education, they would tell us very specifically what programs are to be audited. Okay, and then what steps that we have to perform step by step to ensure that the district or anybody receiving federal state assistance is in compliance. And if you're curious, that information, as far as what programs the district was subject to audit under the state compliance requirement is going to be on page 106. Okay, just for your future reference, if you're curious. Based on the procedures that we performed on all the applicable programs, our opinion was unmodified with the exception of your middle, college, and high school program. Okay, and hopefully you had a chance to kind of skim through the report, especially, you know, towards the end where it really matters. I'm hoping to answer any questions that you may have on the audit itself. But that's pretty much it for me. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, do we have any questions? Let me. I don't see any lights on, no questions. Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the audits as presented. Do they have to be separate? No. I move that we accept the financial audit reports for the fiscal year 2019-20.
My second.
Okay, move by trustee Mateu, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Student Board Member Paulina Enriquez Vazquez. Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Ursul.
Yes.
Trustee Mateu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Okay, motion was adopted and pass 7-0. Mr. Park, thank you very much for joining us tonight. It's great to have a modified report. And we really appreciate all your efforts. We know you spent a lot of time with Mr. Trader in his office. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to 18C approved the 2021 CSBA delegate assembly nomination. Mr. Lee Sung.
There we go. Okay, sorry about that, everybody. I lost my Zoom screen and I was looking at the audit report. Okay, so this next item is, we're talking about the CSBA delegate assembly. Okay, so we have two trustees who have stepped forward to be considered for the delegate assembly. And that is trustee Barto and trustee Mateu. So thank you both for stepping up. And so this item is to approve their nomination.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve nomination of, for a CSBA delegate assembly, trustee Barto and trustee Mateu.
Second.
Who was second?
Leah.
I can't see you, I'm sorry. It was moved by trustee Wagen, seconded by trustee Ursul. A roll call vote.
Student Board Member Paulina Enriquez Vazquez.
Yes.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Crane. Trustee Ursul.
Yes.
Trustee Mateu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to 18D, discuss topics for future study session. And we do have one public comment on 18D. And trustee Ursul, would you please read that?
Yes, that is on 18D from Wendy Lee's. Formation of a financial oversight committee of qualified members of the public. Formation of a board subcommittee to make recommendations about beginning a strategic plan. Formation of a subcommittee to begin process of superintendent selection. 60-day moratorium on all current spending on the Estancia Theater due to the many unknowns of COVID and that the design needs to be reexamined with the COVID in mind. 32 million of taxpayer money should not be used to build a theater that could be obsolete. Instead, a board subcommittee should meet and make recommendations after consulting with professionals about the costs to change the plans. Haste makes waste. A review of the organization of the district's mental health departments to give parents a clear path to seeking help for kids who need it during COVID, which would include the IP process as well.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lee Sung, would you like to address this?
Yes, so first of all, this item was a request from trustee Anderson at our last meeting to discuss and consider topics for future study sessions. And I just want to inform the board that we, in our calendar, when we scheduled our meetings, we did insert two study session dates. The first one coming up is on January 26th. And the second one is on February 23rd. So we already have those built into our calendar. And for your consideration, I know that trustee Anderson specifically mentioned learning loss as a possible topic. I mentioned at the time that maybe we would dedicate some time to our governance team, since we are new and recently adopted board handbook with the protocols. So it is important that we do consider this collectively as a group in terms of what we would like to spend our time on at these study sessions or potentially a future study sessions beyond that.
Okay, we have several hands. I didn't see who was first, so I'm just going to go through. Trustee Barto.
Yes, hi. I would like to second the request for the January 26th study session to be on learning loss and student achievement. I think it would be prudent to look at that towards the end of January so we can make plans for the following year. And the sooner the better. And I think I'm really impressed with all of our new board members. They have caught on really quickly. So I think jumping in with both feet to that would be something that would be a worthwhile use of our time.
Okay, trustee Mateu.
This is trustee Barto actually took the words right out of my mouth. I'd like to also agree with trustee Anderson's plan to request for discussing learning loss. I think that is one of the most imminent things we could work on. And as far as working on the governance portion of that, perhaps we could, if it would give us more time if we wanted to use CSBA facilitators for helping us with our new board members. That would be at the end of February, it would be more likely that they could put us in their schedule for that to happen or for us to work on it ourselves. There's been so many issues coming out of our pandemic this year that some of them may preempt. And I hate that when it happens because we've got such good plans in place. But I do like the idea, we need to address learning loss and we need to address it early. So I like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee Wagen.
There is a lot of community, I guess, discussion on what the fall 2021, 2022 looks like. I'd like to kind of get a discussion session going on how to talk about that and potentially discuss it with issues related to attendance decline. I know that there is a lot of private schools that have to, people will have to decide if they want to go to private school or public school come February or March. And I would like to be able to talk to the community about our plans for the fall. So I'd like to have a discussion session on that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments from board members? I know we may need more than two dates. So I think we should, we should talk about that moving forward of times we can add more. Who am I looking?
I'm.
I'm sorry, Ms. Anderson, I didn't see your hand.
It's not letting me, that's fine. But you were done speaking. I wasn't trying to interrupt you, I was just, you had more to say. Okay, um, yeah, I think it would be wonderful if we could possibly do two things. I think it's short sighted at times. I mean, some of these are things that we can have. I think if people set aside two or three hours, they'd rather have it in one day. So you know, there's an opportunity to talk about learning loss, which I think is something that's really important and timely as well as talking about what we're going to do for the fall and have that really articulated and have contingency plans. So I would really like us to think we can chew gum and walk at the same time and we can have study sessions that have more than one topic, particularly because right now, a lot of these are really pressing. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Crane.
Ditto what definitely learning loss and anticipating a strategic plan for the fall, what it's going to look like for our community. I do, I would like to know, are we going to be provided data at the study session so that we can at least start from a point of knowledge of the statistics of some sort of assessments, understand how much of a loss? And as far as data for the fall, do we know how many students have left each site? And so on, so forth. Just as long as we have enough data to kind of build or at least have a foundation to build what we're going to discuss.
Okay, thank you, trustee Ursul.
Yeah, it's just building on trustee Anderson's point about the multiple topics because it's such a systemic issue, the learning loss and the enrollment drop and the planning for the next year. To be able to also incorporate elements of curriculum into that discussion would be very important. And to follow up on trustee Crane's point, it would be good if we could know, as a new person, I feel like I don't have any clue of when you have this study session date, say it is the January 26th. By what date do I need to get my questions in for data points? Like, for instance, I'd want the roster of all the schools and, you know, what numbers have declined enrollment per school? I'd need to see that before we talk. I'd need to see several other pieces of data. So when do we need to get that request in for that meeting if it is January 26th? To let us know when that would need to take place would be helpful.
Mr. Lee Sung, would you like to address that?
Yeah, so first of all, I appreciate all the ideas and suggestions in terms of these important topics. What we're doing at this point is we're gathering a topic or maybe an issue or something that we want to delve in. And keep in mind, when we do a study session, the idea is that we get to go deeper. We get to go a lot deeper than we would in a regular board meeting on an agenda item. And I also want to just remind everybody that when we do decide on a topic and a date, staff has to do a lot of work to prepare for that. Okay, and we take these study sessions very seriously. We do planning, we make sure we have the right people there. The questions that you're asking in terms of having the meaningful data for that particular topic needs to be prepared and addressed. And so once we decide on that, then we go to work. Okay, and so once we get the topic, we'll go to work. I will meet with the appropriate division. And then it's a little bit of a back and forth. And we'll just make sure that we're on the right track. We'll make sure that we cover the areas that need to be covered. But I want to caution us that we're not spreading this too wide. Because if we do, we're not going to get anything accomplished. Okay, and so the challenge right now, which I think we all can concur is, you know, what's happening right now with our students? Where are they at? What are the areas that we need to focus more on so that we can address the learning loss and the challenges that all of our students are facing? Okay, and then we work on the solutions for that. We also want to, and I want to make sure that this is important, you know, what are we doing now? What are we doing right now in our classrooms? And quite frankly, we've been, I feel like we've been dealing with one crisis after another, where I would love to start shifting the focus of our time together, whether it's at board meetings or through deep study sessions, of what's going on right now, what's happening in classrooms right now. And then what else do we need to do? And let's not wait until summer. So I don't want you all to think that this is a study session in January for something, we're going to wait for the summer. It's what we need to continue doing now, what we need to do more between now and the end of the school year. That would extend to through summer. Okay, so there's a lot to do, but once we get the topic, we go to work. We go to work and we will ask questions and make sure that we have the right data, the right people, and the right focus.
Trustee Wagen.
So talking about the right now, I'd like to have a discussion session on how do we get our kids back in elementary school to longer days and get reports out on where we are on those plans? And that is going to go into how do we mitigate learning loss going on right now? Because I think one thing we don't know is, where in the curriculum are our teachers today? And are they behind where they were last year at this specific time? And if we know that they are, that indicates that we definitely need more time in person and with our students. So, but there is, I would like to understand how we can get back to longer days this year.
Mr. Lee Sung, part of that would come in at regular board meetings as well, I would think, as you start to meet.
Yeah.
Those issues.
Yeah, depending on the topic or even the question, you know, we don't necessarily need to wait for a study session to address some of these things. But I hear the concern and I hear the connection that you're making in terms of learning loss and having more instructional time. And certainly, that's something I think we would all want to see happen, is more instructional time, not only just instructional time, but in-person and quality instructional time. As we all know, there's a lot of challenges with making that happen right now. One thing that I will share, that, you know, I did pull a group together, including some site principals, to start looking at how we can prepare for that opportunity where we can increase instructional time and instructional day. Okay, so I don't want anybody to feel like we're not doing anything. We need to plan and prepare for that. Right now may not be the best time to expand that, but we need to prepare that when we're ready to do that.
Mr. Lee Sung, does that committee have representatives from all four zones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
Um, yes, respectfully, when I put this item, the topic on the agenda or wanted to, it was specifically to address learning loss and what our strategic plan is. It wasn't to decide at a later date. So one of the concerns that I hear every single day from parents in my zone is addressing this need. And I understand that it will take staff time, but it's the most pressing need that is currently happening. And we did not have a summer school for elementary in the past. If we're going to do something like that, we need to discuss it as soon as possible. So I would like for us to have a discussion about having a study session on some of these issues in January. We need to address them sooner, not later. I do understand that it may take a lot of work, but we do not need any further declining enrollment. And we need to have plans for the spring and the summer as well as when we go back in January. Thank you. So actually, so when do you foresee, what is the timeline in your mind for having this happen? Because I just heard that it was possibly not till February or an indefinite time.
Trustee Anderson, I agree that listening to the board today. Trustee Anderson, I agree that listening to the board today, this sounds like it's a pretty high issue that we would like this addressed right away.
Mr. Lee Sung.
No, this is a, this is a board discussion. I'm listening and I'm taking notes. And this is a discussion for the board to indicate what topics, this is an opportunity, not just the learning loss, but for any other topic to come up. And then the board should have a just further discussion to give me direction in terms of what topic you feel is most critical, most urgent. And I shared January 26th would be the first date. And February 23rd would be the second date.
So it sounds like listening to this conversation that learning loss is a priority with everyone to start talking about. So as a starter, could we put that on for the January 26th? So that everybody's aware of it, then after a short rest over winter break, that that the appropriate staff could start working on that.
Yeah. If, if that's the direction of the board, then my next step would be to start working with staff and we can confirm that. And I work very closely with the, with the board president to make sure that that's still on track. But if that's the direction, we will start getting busy on that.
Trustee Crane, did you have another comment?
Just a quick comment that I would like to see a mental health element to the learning loss in our study sessions.
I have a comment then. Roughly, how long do you anticipate, how long do you anticipate our study session to be for the new board members, just budgeting time so that if it's a budget, if it's a two hour slight selection of time, we can take up two hours talking amongst ourselves, let alone with everybody else. So I'm, I'm reluctant to book the February date. If we don't get done with everything, we may get to a certain point, we may want to use that date to keep going and finalize things and I but yet we've got other things to talk about, but really, do you see what I'm saying? I, I think this is a pretty big topic that would grow and become something else, add in something else. As we talk about it, this is going to come out of it. So I hate it when we have a study session, I feel it going somewhere, but we've got another study session over here. Like, we did chocolate cake over here, but now we've got pizza coming up, so we can't talk about chocolate cake anymore and we need to get it squared away. Do you know what I mean? So that's my opinion and I'll.
So would you like to set a topic for the January 26th and then discuss moving on from there, what else we would want to add?
Well, so, so we can, we can surely focus on student academic achievement and the learning loss component of that for January 26th. And again, I will work with staff on that. We don't have to commit to the February one. We can wait a bit to see if there needs to be an extension of that or if there's another topic that becomes more, more critical. Okay. And quite frankly, the, the time that we need to spend as a governance team, you know, we don't have to do it on one of these days. We can pick another date that works for everybody. If we're going to bring in the CSB consultant, we can check with her calendar and find another good date and time. Okay. I, I just, I do need to speak on behalf of staff. Like I said, there's a lot of work that goes into these things. And unfortunately, right now, this is a very, very difficult time. And, and we're hoping for stability. Stability is always a good thing. And, and this, but this is where we need to be spending our time and efforts rather than in some cases, literally putting out fire and smoke. So, so we, this is a good, a good topic to focus on.
Okay, so this is just a topic of discussion today. There's no action taken. But I think that we've given clear direction of the way we want to go and we'll continue to talk among ourselves and possibly have board governments within that. And
I'm concerned, confused or both. We're having, we can, we're scheduling the 26th meeting to discuss learning loss slash academic achievement or lack of achievement. So that's, that's on the topic for the 26th. We've got that squared away, right? Are we all nodding that that's what? Okay. So Mr. Lee Sung has that direction. Because it says no decisions are being made, but we did just make a decision. So I want to make sure that that's not.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a direction. It's a direction and that, I think that's appropriate for, for this item.
Okay, we have, we have one more hand.
Yeah, I just had a quick comment following up on trustee Metoy's point about the time. Because learning loss is such a critical issue and it's impacting all of our kids. When I heard two hours, I was like, oh no, that's not enough. I mean, we just had a closed session that could have gone on for another couple hours. So I mean, in my mind, this topic can't really be tackled in less than like a four hours. So just to make sure that we give ourselves upfront, so that we don't have to reschedule or extend or cut it off halfway, let's just do it on the 26th, if that's what we're all going to mark on our calendars. So that we have appropriate amount of time to tackle the complexities that are going to come up.
Yeah, it's currently, it's, it's tentatively set for three hours. Tentatively set for three hours. And again, we can, we can adjust. You know, but, but three hours is typically what we would do.
Okay. Thank you for all the input and comments. I think this is really helpful and it gives direction of where we'd want to go next. Thank you. We have added one item to our discussion action, item 17C5. So we'll bring that back. Seventeen. 17C5, approve the memorandum of understanding between the Newport Mesa Unified School District and the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers regarding working conditions during the 2020-21 school year level two instructional model. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. We do have 54 comments. Oh, I'm sorry. We have 54 comments. We will stick to our 20 minutes of comments. And so to do that, let's keep them to two minutes to try to get them all in. So on 17C5, we'll start with trustee Wagen. Would you like to start reading?
Sure. This comment comes from Kate Caluccio. I'm shocked that the teachers' union is even proposing this. They aren't thinking of the students' needs at all, which is to add more in-person instruction, not take it away. This is pure politics and power plays. At the expense of our kids, strongly urge NMUSD to take our kids' best interests in mind and vote no, taking away Wednesday in-person time.
I have the next comment from Lauren Hemstad. Please discuss agenda topic 17C5 at the board meeting and at the conclusion of your discussion, I urge you not to approve this item. I am the parent of first and fourth grade students. The distance learning environment has been an incredible challenge for us and any incremental rollback of in-class learning to distance learning is inappropriate. At a max, at a minimum, a base level of literacy is required to achieve success through distance learning. Certainly, first graders do not possess such a skill, nor the emotional wherewithal to withstand the demands of distance learning. Please consider the incredible burden that children have already had to carry through this pandemic. Thank you.
My comment is from Allison Cotton. Our school has followed the COVID guidelines and the school and faculty at Mariners has been safe since school opened for in-person learning in August. Our children and families have suffered enough with the current two and a half hours per day in-person learning schedule. What's the reason for removing in-person learning on Wednesdays? If it's COVID related, then please show me the science to prove why keeping our children home on Wednesdays provides more safety and is more beneficial for the children. I believe they should be in school full-time, 8:30 to 2:40 with their entire class. Children are not spreading this virus. Everyone else in other industries has had to go back to work with much less PPE and support than the schools. This is politics. It's not about science anymore because if it were, the children would be in school full-time with the same safety measures in place. The private schools have much less PPE than our public schools, yet they're able to function at full capacity with little to no problems since August. Our children in the public school system considered less than those who attend private institutions. The school board and the teachers' unions' decisions up to this point has led me to believe they are. The children are safer in school. Start fighting for them.
My comment is from Jenny Dory. Thank you to the union, district and school board for your continued hard work and best efforts for doing what is best for the students in our care. I would like to speak on the proposed change to have our Wednesdays be distance learning. I am disappointed in the parties that came to this agreement primarily because the stakeholders did not have input into the decision-making process. I do not believe that changing the schedule at this time is in the best interest of students and families. I believe it would tarnish our reputation as hardworking, invested teachers. There's plenty of time in our schedule for planning. Please work on better communication as we need to work together to be our very best.
This one is from Heather Maddock. Please do not do this to our children. A move like this will just further prove how inferior a public education is to a private one and will continue to cause more setbacks and irreversible damage to our children's mental health and their education. Every private school has been open full-time and done so safely and without incident or massive outbreak. Why can Newport Mesa not figure this out as well? Shame on Newport Mesa.
This comment is from Tamara Fairbanks from NMFT. I personally would like to thank the NMFT and NMUSD negotiation team for working on this agreement. We exchanged the best solution within our grasp on how to address the needs of teachers and students. For many parents who work outside of our boundaries, this schedule is a consistent schedule for them to plan for on Wednesdays. For the students, it is the only safe opportunity to see their friends outside of their cohorts. For special education, although they will be in person, they achieve equity with all other students with their day ending at the same time as all other students. For teachers, it provides a resource of time so they can plan for a high-quality instruction. For the entire district, Wednesdays provides the equity that has been lacking between our diverse elementary schools. Additionally, we took the successful characteristics of our fall conferences and emulated it in our conference week in the spring. We acknowledged the amount of time that teachers need to prepare for such a week and found a way to acknowledge our elementary special day classrooms for their work on progress reports.
There's more?
Not seeing it. The reaction from this MOU demonstrates the huge disparity within our district. Although we have schools with vast resources complaining about the idea of a remote Wednesday, we also hear stories from parents who will benefit because the altering Wednesday, alternating Wednesday presented a hardship for their work life. Although Zoom is not ideal, this one day where students can be in one class together and interact with one another is helpful to kids' social well-being. We lift ourselves by lifting those of us in need. This MOU is a reflection of that. We wish to lift the needs of all the teachers and students. This agreement is a cordial and collegial representation of how our parties can work together and create solutions. I stand in agreement with NMUSD for this MOU.
My comment is from Natalie Matzler. Please do not eliminate the Wednesday in-person learning for NMUSD TK through six students. The students need all the in-person time with their teachers that they can get. This change has a minimal impact on safety, but a material impact on student engagement and learning.
This comment comes from Andrea Michelle Parks. Any reduction to the in-person schooling currently being conducted in favor of additional prep time should be substantiated with teacher requests for more time and surveys of the, of the membership. Clearly, the MOU was done without this input. With the majority of teachers at Mariners Elementary School in opposition to the MOU, I suspect that other teachers would be as well. Please consider this rush request.
Next comment is from Kathleen Ream. Please do not turn Wednesdays into distance learning only lessons for all. Our children are barely getting enough time in school as it is. Please help our children's mental and social well-being by keeping them in-person classes on Wednesday that they so desperately need.
My comment is from Casey Weber. Please do not approve this MOU and further reduce elementary school student in-person learning time. The amount of in-person learning time is already inadequate for student education and parents trying to work. I have great respect and admiration for our teachers at Davis Elementary, but they do not need prep time. We all need to come together and put in extra effort to support our students and community during this pandemic. Please instead work to increase the amount of in-person education for our elementary students. Thank you.
My comment is from Brittany Bean. Our community is tired of teachers' unions using our kids as pawns in their personal agenda. Our kids need to be in school. The teachers have ample time to prepare for a two-hour school day. As a parent, I am not being paid and have the responsibility of teaching my children well over two hours a day. Do better, do your job, care about these kids, make a better future than the nightmare we are in right now.
This is from Alyssa Wustfeld. It has been brought to my attention that the board will be voting on approving 100% distance learning on Wednesdays moving forward. Why would the board approve of anything that increases virtual learning? This is moving us in a wrong direction. I would hope as the Board of Education, that the only thing you would be pushing for is more in-person instruction for our students. Our district has done an amazing job following the guidelines being put in place and our numbers are low. Please do not approve of this. Please fight to get our kids back to school in person more often, not less.
This is from Tam Meckern. Kids need more safe in-person instructional time, not less. Whom does it really serve to change Wednesday to all distance learning? This seems to create a consistent schedule and does not replace the value of in-person. I do not support this change from my student.
This comment is from Jenny Barberi. It is beyond frustrating and sad that we are holding up with hope that the board and this district will do the right thing for our kids. Come to find out that instead of preparing for the kids to go back more hours of school, the teachers are wanting to take the few hours these children get away from them. Please explain the reasoning. It is not for safety reasons as that is the day, that is the day only one cohort attends. You as board members have to fight back and ask why. There is no real reason then why entertain this. You have picked a superintendent that does not care for our kids. Our community has lost all confidence in the district. Our community has been broken up due to the decisions you have made. You are hurting the kids by not having them in school more, let alone less. Please stop this. Do not vote. Please stop this. Do not vote for no in-school instruction on Wednesdays. Many more families will leave this district. Does it make sense to you, my preschooler goes to school three hours a day and my second grader goes two and a half hours? How in the world can you justify this? I'm beyond disappointed in the board as decisions have not made in the best interest of the children or science. How are all these other school districts open full-time? Maybe you can hire someone who can fight against this teachers' union because they are running the show.
My comment is from Michelle Hubner. Please do not take away even more in-person learning from these kids. Being in the classroom with their teachers and peers is crucial to not only learning, but mental health as well. They need every minute they can get. We need to be moving forward, not backward, when it comes to education this year. Please don't take away even more time from these kids. They've suffered enough as it is.
My comment is from Chris Jones. In-person education is essential to the well-being of students. To say we are struggling with adequately educating our children over the past 10 months would be a massive understatement. Safety precautions are in place. There is absolutely no reason to revert back There is absolutely no reason to revert back to 100% online learning unless it is the government and school board's wish to see the demise of the community it serves. Please consider the well-being of the children and families in our community prior to making any backward movement. The educational, social, and emotional fate of our children is in your hands. We need you to make the choice that is best for them. Thank you.
My comment is from Carlene Stealth. Please don't eliminate in-person learning on Wednesdays. They are hardly in-person as it is. Zoom does not work, and my kids hate it. It's a waste of time. Why change what is working?
My comment is from Matt Chaney. Children should continue with more in-person instruction, not less. Keep Wednesday in-person learning.
This is from Tyler Parks. I respectfully ask the board to vote no on the memorandum of understanding the MOU between the district and the NMFT that would eliminate in-person instruction at our K through six elementary schools. This is another attempt by union leadership to remove teachers from the classroom, except this time, the teachers themselves are not even in support of the initiative. In a joint letter submitted to the district and to their own union, 27 teachers from Mariners Elementary stated in no uncertain terms, they don't support the MOU. They don't need additional prep time, and eliminating in-person instruction on Wednesdays will be bad for the teachers, the students, and create additional hardships for the families and our communities. A no vote is a vote for our teachers, our students, and their families. Finally, some advice for district personnel. The next time union leadership would like to negotiate an MOU, first ask them if their initiative has the support of a majority of their own members.
This comment is from Sarah Sewell. Instruction on Wednesday should not change to remote learning. Remote learning does not equate to in-person learning. Students need more in-person instruction time, not less.
This comment is from Ben Traviso. I highly oppose the option for distance learning for both cohorts on Wednesdays. I strongly believe that the children need to resume normal in-person class activities as the data around COVID-19 infections in elementary school children is clear. There is very low risk associated with children, and the psychological effects of limiting in-school interactions has a greater impact on their mental and emotional well-being.
This comment is from Yvette Cohen. I understand the board is considering a request proposal to discontinue in-person on Wednesdays. It is unfathomable how all neighboring districts are back to school full-time, but NMUSD is instead creating even more ways to keep the kids out of school. The majority of teachers should be providing the same curriculum that they have provided for years past. As it stands, most of that is now the burden of the parents to oversee at home. Why would they require more time to prepare than in any other school year? Our elementary school kids are in school 2.5 hours a day, four days a week. The PM students finally attended a Wednesday session last week after not being in school on Wednesday since October. This is simply not acceptable. The board, the union, and every single teacher should be looking for ways to get our children back in school full-time, like nearly every other local district, not creating reasons to keep them home even more. I believe we are all entitled to a specific examples of how and why teachers are unable to prepare during the hours they do not have children in class. It's rather bizarre and hypocritical of the district to repeatedly request flexibility and assistance from parents when this is clearly not being requested of teachers. I work full-time. Now that I have to oversee two elementary students complete their work, I often have to work later than normal to complete my own job tasks. Why aren't teachers doing the same? Absent some significant findings of overburden, this proposal should be left out of the meeting.
The next comment is from Marcy Kaye. I have been able to witness firsthand my son's grades K and N1 inability to engage and remain attentive to Zoom learning. It is inaccurate to assume that distance learning is effective, especially for such young ages. The proposed model would essentially create a monthly schedule where four days a month the kids are expected to learn via Zoom, basically a full school week versus distance learning two days a month. Our kids are already being asked to engage in a shortened 2.5 hours per day schedule, and now the district is asking that they remove additional days of in-person learning? I ask that you kindly reconsider, as our kids have already lost so much in-person schooling.
My comment is from Nicole Maggard. These kids already are missing enough critical in-person class time, and the staff does not need even more time taken from these kids to prepare. This is absolutely absurd. The numbers of cases prove we should be getting back to more in-person learning, not less.
My comment is from Kelly Dan. In-person education is so important for our students. In-person education is so important for our students. Please do not decrease the minimal precious time our students get with them in the classroom. So many students have left our public schools, and we don't need more reasons for them to leave or more disadvantages over the private schools.
This is from Laura Oricino. We need more in-person instruction, not less. My two children are second and fifth graders at Mariners Elementary School. They enjoy going to school and wish they could go longer. In-person classroom learning has proven so much more effective than learning via Zoom calls. When they are on Zoom, I don't have time to manage what they are doing. I disagree with the teachers' union recommendation for more prep time. Please take this comment into consideration.
This comment is from Jana Teeter. Please do not take away Wednesday in-person teaching. Our children are already lacking so much in-person time with their teachers. This will only add to the problem. What more prep time could teachers need this Wednesday for?
I can read it. John, this comment is from John Hermstad. Please do not approve Agenda IDA, Agenda Topic 17C5, which relates to implementing an additional distance learning day for elementary students. I am a father of first and fourth grade elementary students. School is already operating on a highly reduced in-person schedule at just 2.5 hours a day. Further distance learning for elementary students is inappropriate. A recent LA Times editorial from 12/10/2020 makes the following points that should be taken into consideration. Number one, distance learning is not even close to an on-campus experience. Number two, other essential workers have been at their post for months now. Why shouldn't teachers and other school staff be seen as essential too? Number three, the need to maintain children on campus has become more urgent as the story of distance learning has unfolded. Number four, classrooms have not been observed to be significant sources of COVID transmission. Thank you.
President Yelsey, that's the end of the 20-minute time period?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Do we have comments from board members?
President Yelsey, if we can just make a brief statement and just kind of summarize what's in the MOU. So I will turn it over to Leona Olson.
Thank you, President Yelsey, Vice President Barto. That's fun to say. Tonight before you is the MOU with NMFT regarding the working conditions that are related to the Level 2 instructional model, particularly at the elementary. So this augments the other MOUs that we have established and agreed upon. The MOU does cover report card days for second and third trimester. It also addresses the second trimester parent conference week. And in addition to that, it takes into consideration the Wednesday and preparation time.
Okay, do I see any hands raised? No comments? Okay, I'll comment. You know, I appreciate the negotiations. I understand how hard everybody works on that. And we just read comments. We didn't even get to all 54 of them, but I think they were mostly parents. And in the end, I feel that the one element of this MOU regarding the Wednesdays, there are no parents, at least that I know, who have contacted me, talked to me, would want this. They feel that their kids, especially young kids, are not able to learn well on Zoom, and this would be taking a step back. And I believe all of us hope that, long-term, we can increase the length of the day at school for the elementary kids. I know our superintendent has committed to work on that. He has a committee actually started on that. But in the meantime, to take away in-learning time from them, to me, is not something that any of the parents that I've talked to want. And in the end, it's my job to represent the constituents who have elected me to this office. And for that reason, this one element of the MOU, and I know it all comes together, but I feel it would be difficult for me to support because of that. And I hope that something can go back and be worked to make it more acceptable to other families. Trustee Ursula?
I believe trustee Metoye and Barto, they had their hands first.
Trustee Metoye?
Thank you. This is very difficult. I know how important negotiations are. I really appreciate the fact that we have gotten our negotiations to a collegial and cooperative place, and that's so important. And I think that the portion of the MOU that regards the conference week is a great one because it plans ahead. The teachers know by March what they're going to be doing. I think taking away in-person class time is not good for kids. When I took this job, my main filter was do what's best for children, and I believe children should be in school. Thank you.
Trustee Barto?
Thank you. And again, I want to honor the efforts of the negotiation teams, both teams. I think that they had an admirable goal, which was to decrease the stress of teachers on Wednesdays. I know that presenting two different sets of lessons for two different types of student attendees can be lengthy and stressful, and I honor all the work that's gone into that. And as mentioned in the comments, I honor that it's difficult. It was presented as a solution to help parents with difficult situations for working. However, the longer this goes on and the longer that kids are out of the classroom, we are seeing such deficits that that Wednesday is problematic for me when, you know, as one someone I knew said that they watched their student go from an English speaker to in time over Zoom, as she put it, wilt like a little flower. And so that kind of sticks with me when I think about distance learning in those kindergarten, first grade, second grade years, especially for our English language learners who really depend on that as a way of supporting what they get at home. So the Wednesdays are, the Wednesday portion of this MOU would be problematic for me to support.
Trustee Wagen?
Yeah, I want to thank the negotiating teams for all your hard work on this. You know, it's something that we definitely appreciate all your efforts on. But again, taking in-person education away from our little kids is not something we, I got elected to do. So with that, I do believe that a lot of the students from K through six definitely need in-person instruction, and that's just something that I can never, as a board member, support taking away.
Thank you. Trustee Ursula?
Hi, yes, thank you to the negotiating team. It seems that you all worked very, very hard on this. It just comes at an interesting time where I feel the fatigue about the pandemic has reached an all-time high. At the same time, we're starting to reach the exponential growth phase in the pandemic, where we are right now witnessing our ICU capacity at about 1% here in the county. And the positivity rate, for some neighborhoods, it might not be as concerning, but for instance, for the west side of Costa Mesa, that positivity rate is at 13%, which is substantial, even though it might be 7% for, you know, on average in Costa Mesa and Newport. But when you look at our neighborhood of the west side in particular, that is a significant substantial concern. And so if the understanding is that having kids be remote for that one extra day a week is going to decrease the amount of interactions that they have and decrease the amount of interactions that staff has, although we all want kids in school as soon as humanly possible. At this moment in time, if that's what the staff and the principals are seeing, the parents I've talked to in my neighborhood have just only expressed concern about how Wednesday is a hot mess. Some people don't even know what day they're supposed to show up. Some people just keep their kids home on Wednesday because they can't tell which one it's supposed to be. So it seems like there's no love lost on Wednesdays. And kids will, per this document, it says that they will get one hour of mathematics and one hour of English language with 30 minutes of synchronous, altogether learning directly with their peers and their teacher. So for me, that's frankly more than kids are getting in the cloud school from what I'm seeing. So that still seems like a positive outcome where kids can still learn. It's just not in the ideal, typical way that we all want it to be, but there's still learning offered. Thank you.
Trustee Crane?
Yeah, I wanted to acknowledge the work of our negotiation team. I know you put in a lot of hours and energy. But you know, as trustee Yelsey said, we are representing the voice of our communities. And listening to these comments tonight and also being approached by so many concerned parents, I do think that kids belong in the classroom because that's where they learn best. And just again, based on the feedback I've received from my constituents, I would not approve this MOU.
Okay, trustee Anderson, did you have your hand up?
I did not. I can speak to this, though. I mean, the parents that I'm talking to are so concerned about transportation, which we haven't solved. So I have actually heard both in speaking with some principals as well. I've heard some of the schools in my area are 50/50. So I think it's a tricky, after Thanksgiving, a lot changed, and families are not feeling as safe about coming back. But I think that our obligation is to educate the kids who want to be there and are asking to be there, and the families need that. So I think it's a tricky decision, but I I think the Wednesday has always been tricky. I wish it was a Monday. I wish it was a Friday. I think it would make a lot more sense for a lot of working families than taking two and a half hours for their kids at school in the middle of a Wednesday. So I have mixed feelings.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no further comments, I just want to read the motion again, as 17C5, approve the memorandum of understanding between the Newport Mesa Unified School District and the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers Regarding Working Conditions During the 2020-21 School Year Level 2 Instructional Model. Do I have a motion to approve it? Yes. It has to be approved?
All or none.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion? I have no motion, so. It dies. Okay. All right, I I'm sorry that all the work was put into this. I hope that the I'm sorry that all the work was put into this. I hope that the negotiating teams can go back and come up with something that is more acceptable, that we can approve so we can move forward with the students in elementary and support the staff. Okay, we next have community input on non-agendized items, and I believe we do have a comment.
I have a thing.
Yes.
I just have to get to it. Thank you. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Each speaker has three minutes of comment. Time per board bylaws 9323. There is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. In the event, the number of submitted public comments for a topic not on the agenda are anticipated to exceed 20 minutes, the order of the comments will be read in random order until the 20 minutes have expired. Comments submitted electronically through the links below that are selected will be read into the meeting video record. Regardless of whether comments are read into the video record, all comments received will be submitted to the board. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments, depending on the topic and the number of persons submitting comments.
Okay, we have three comments. Trustee Metoye, would you like to begin?
My comment is from Wendy Lee's. Congratulations and welcome new trustees Leia Orsoilu, Krista Wigan, and Carol Crane. It's a brand-new chapter for NMUSD, and I'm excited about how you will work together to improve the education of all our children in all parts of Newport Beach and Costa Mesa. I've been paying attention to the school board since 1977. All five of my children, now grown, attended NMUSD schools at one time or another. As a longtime taxpayer, current educator, and former trustee, I have recommendations for you as you set your goals and priorities. Number one, write a new strategic plan. Hold Zoom outreach meetings in each of the districts so you can hear from parents, students, teachers, and the general public about how you might improve our schools. Please, excuse me, publicize these meetings so they are well-attended. Number two, staff members who have agenda items need to write written summary reports on agenda items so that we can read the reports prior to board meetings and make comments and ask questions and not have to wait and listen to presentations to get the information at the board meeting. Please follow, number three, please follow the lead of other agencies and allow for the public to give oral comments during your meetings and not have to comment through email. And four, finally, plan your 2021 meeting so they do not conflict with the Costa Mesa City Council meetings held on the first and third Tuesdays. I wish you well.
My comment comes from Joseph Diacino. As a high school teacher in our district, I do see and agree with the importance of doing our best to keep the doors open for all who wish to attend. I also have read Orange County's and Newport Mesa's position on staying open, even though we have hit record numbers on all of our state benchmarks. What I haven't seen is if our district board has determined if there is a county or city tipping point number that will force a shutdown, and I'm not talking about self-reported numbers of cases by parents of district enrolled students. What are the tipping point numbers for ICU occupancies, adjusted case rates, positive test rates, and the equity index? As a district, we do not prepare well between March and August for how to operate our schools. We created a cloud campus separate from the traditional schools, then created C cohorts at each school, which served the same purpose of the cloud campus, but without that connectivity to the brick and mortar school communities. We then dismissed the procedures and transfer deadlines that were put in place between the Cloud Academy and our traditional schools, but without any connection to the curriculum and students we're transferring to and from. Are we banking on universal vaccine distributions as another hail mary solution to get us through the rest of the year and reduce the COVID count? If you, the board, do not set parameters, you are following you are following versus leading. As a community member and an employee, I ask you respectfully to lead. Keep us open while we can safely stay open, but determine what a safe level is so we can properly prepare to do our jobs well. And FYI, Newport Harbor High School is down seven custodial staff members due to COVID. So we are operating without most of the staff that is entrusted in cleaning our campus each day.
The last comment is from John Kosoff. Dear school board, I want to thank you for having the schools open for hybrid learning. As a parent of three children, two elementary, one high school in the district, I cannot say how thankful we are the kids are back in school. Even if it is part-time, our children and their friends are so much happier and doing so much better in-person learning. The transparency you have provided and the COVID tracker has been great to track. We have only seen one reported case in over three months in our elementary school. Protocols have been followed. Only one case, and we feel 100% safe sending our children to school. We cannot wait till the schools open back full-time. 100% distance learning doesn't work. I heard the teachers' union want us to get back to distance learning. That is 100% unacceptable and 100% the wrong move for education and our kids' mental health. The numbers and data have shown that NMUSD, the schools, parents, and teachers have done a great job keeping our schools open. Please keep up the great work and keep the schools open for in-person education. Thanks, John Kosoff. Okay, and now we will move to informal reports. Superintendent Lee Sung.
All right, I had my opportunity to give my report earlier in the agenda, so I will defer to my colleagues on the executive cabinet.
Okay, we'll start. Mrs. Jockum, would you like to start tonight?
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you, President Yelsey and board trustees. I'd like to also welcome the new trustees to our little family here and and look forward to the work that my division, which includes special education, student support services, and health services. Excited to see that you look at what the work that we do within the district. Other than that, we are busy. Health services primarily, the, there's been a tremendous amount of work by our health assistants, our nurses, and our director of health services in dealing with our COVID-positive cases, our close contacts, and our symptoms. And our nurses and health assistants have really gone the extra step in reaching out to families when students are absent due to some type of COVID-related symptom and really following up and finding out from them what's going on. So we continue to do that work. We know that even though that we are on a winter break for a couple of weeks, that we will probably still get calls and concerns coming in through the break and starting back in January. So we just look forward to starting 2021 and making plans for the future for our kids and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Solsen.
Yes, thank you. And again, welcome. I think you're going to hear that quite a bit this evening, and I do look forward to meeting with you and engaging conversations around the work that our human resources department does. I want to echo what my colleague shared with you, where Dr. Jockum's team is monitoring the students and in regards to COVID, the HR team is monitoring and supporting our employees. And I just want to really thank Kristen Clark, our administrative director of classified, Megan Brown, our administrative director of certificated, and our newest member, Shoshana Nikano, director of personnel. The endless hours that they are putting in to ensure that the people have somebody to talk to, they have a way to access leads, and also they know that they can reach out to us so that we can get them back to work safely. So I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you. Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you, President Yelsey. I also would like to welcome our new board members and particularly thank you for the way that you have understood this challenge of Decembers. Decembers in non-COVID times are very, very full months, meetings, CSBA, parties, all of those types of things. But one of the things of just the oddity of the calendar that's set up here in the state of California is that you take office right at the time that we present you with an awful lot of reading. And so for you to just get sworn in and have to get through this, thank you for your patience this last little bit. It will get better. You will have more context and more time to get through all of these things, and of course, we stand ready to help you as you do. So welcome and thank you for your patience.
Dr. Baumeister. Dr. Sir.
Yes, thank you, President Yelsey, Vice President Barto, board members, new board members, cabinet, and esteemed guests. Would like to provide you with a quick update on our Bridges in Mathematics K5 core instructional program. Just as a reminder, back in, on May 23rd of 2017 is when the board approved and we adopted the Bridges in Mathematics materials for kindergarten through fifth grade. And as an update, last, the last week of October of this school year, 300 huge boxes of math manipulatives arrived at the district office. And these are called completer kits. And we have had 30 NMUSD employees, our instructional aides that serve in our after-school programs, working diligently, going through thousands and thousands of pieces of materials so that we can have these materials put together for all of our teachers and every single student. A big piece to that puzzle is really the intent is to minimize the sharing of physical items in the classroom and to facilitate hands-on learning opportunities. And we now have purchased enough of the additional manipulatives to be able to provide individual kits to each student. These hands-on learning and visual models are core elements of our approach to our math education. And deliveries are going to be starting this week out to all of the schools. So we are excited about that, and I would be remiss if I didn't also recognize both Kathleen Leary and Bessie Galey for the extraordinary work in putting a lot of this together. And especially to our 30 classified employees who just worked so diligently to move forward with a very aggressive purchase as far as making sure that every student has a set of instructional manipulatives that they can use individually that won't be shared with other students.
Thank you, Dr. Sir. It's nice amidst all the issues and problems we're dealing with that we hear something about curriculum. So that was a little different report. It was nice to hear. Mr. Drake.
Thank you, President Yelsey and Vice President Barto. It's nice to say that as well. And new board members, it is a pleasure to have you as part of our team now, and I'm looking forward to lots of conversations about teaching and learning. It is refreshing to hear that that is at the top of our list. With that also, you know, presents its challenges with the last eight, nine months of teaching and learning that have been going on in our classrooms. I do look forward to diving into the idea of instruction in our classrooms and making sure that it's maximized with the time that we have. You know, the focus of our efforts need to be on that first-best instruction and making sure that every single one of our kids, regardless of the amount of time that we have, has access to their grade-level content. And, you know, that is first and foremost the critical piece of eliminating loss because you're addressing it with that first-best instruction. But I do look forward with our ed services team working with you to come up with, you know, our strategic plan to make sure that we're addressing the needs of all of our students. And look forward to those conversations and that work.
Thank you very much. Mr. Trader, do you have a report?
I just want to circle back to the first interim report, and it's thicker than it's ever been. It won't be this thick next time, only because we included some things we couldn't not include in the June adoption. But besides it being a great effective sleep aid and a heavy-duty doorstop, it includes, we try to be exhaustive as possible with all the information in there. And of course, when we do that, sometimes we don't see the forest through the trees, and so we welcome any feedback you might have as you read this. So thank you.
On that note, I just would like to mention to my colleagues that there's always been, can you hear me? Okay, that there's always been a challenge, Mrs., the former trustee, Mrs. Snell, and I used to try to find a mistake somewhere, and I worked at it, and I couldn't find one. And I was so, I felt like I didn't do my job. So if anyone else finds something I missed, please report it.
Okay, thank you. We will go on now to board member report. Who? I don't. Okay.
Like, when does this budget before become the budget report? Is it in June?
I missed part of the question. Could you repeat that, please?
Yes, this is the interim budget report. When does it become the budget report?
So tonight, what happened is, these are proposed changes in the budget. And so since you approved that, that this is now our budget until we get to second interim, and then we'll change it again. And then we'll go through second interim till we get to what's called estimated actual, and then we'll get to unaudited actual. So it just kind of changes throughout the year.
In this case, interim doesn't mean like an interim principal who's waiting to be real. This is just a time period. Interim is a time period.
Okay, since you were speaking, would you like to give a board report, or do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, first of all, it's an absolute privilege to be up here and and be a part of a team that is going to provide solutions for our kids so they can become lifelong learners. I want to thank, gosh, the staff for meeting with us, Superintendent Lee Sung for being patient with us and our questions. Thank you for allowing us to attend the CSBA conference. That was very enlightening. It's almost as if we, you know, we could use three more days of conferences in order to learn more, but I understand we only had two, which is fine. And it's just wonderful to be part of the team. And I wish all of you and our public a wonderful holiday season. Please be safe, but enjoy your families and your friends and stay healthy. Thank you.
Trustee Wigan, would you like to say anything?
Sure. I just want to say I'm, again, echo the same thoughts. It's a privilege to be up here with all of you and to be steering this district into such a great positive direction. I'm just looking forward to getting to meet every one of you on cabinet and in the district because I do really believe that this is such an important role, and I just want to take it wholeheartedly and try to have the best outcomes for our students in this district. We did attend CSBA. One thing I wanted to say that really struck with me, and that's how I feel like I would like to lead and steer our decisions, is there's a stat that said districts that spend over 60% of their time on learning outcomes and boards that spend their time on learning outcomes, over 60% of their time on that, actually far outperform other districts that spend time on, say, facilities projects or just the minutia. So I think, as we were talking about today in our discussion, a study session ideas is that we're in the, we're on the right path to keep learning objectives in the forefront for our students. is that we're on the right path to keep learning objectives in the forefront for our students here at Newport Mesa. And that's how I'd like to make sure that we make decisions and focus this district on the learning outcomes for every student. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson.
Yes, that was one of the things that stood out to me as well. Student achievement, I think, is really important, and I'm glad that we will be focusing on that more in the January study session and hopefully the year to come. One of the workshops that I went to with CSBA was Governance with an Equity Lens, and one of the things that stood out to me the most in that was eliminating the opportunity gap, not closing it. And I think we have a hard time sometimes even focusing on closing the gap, and the goal needs to be eliminating the opportunity gap. So I would like to see us spend more effort doing that, and I think we have the team now in place to make that a reality. One of the other things I would love in the upcoming months, too, is I know there had been a few, there had been specifically one accident related to a student a few years ago in the city of Newport Beach, and they did an amazing study of traffic and pedestrian safety, and there was an accident as well in Costa Mesa in the past two weeks, actually two, but one involved a young child. And so I would love if we can get the learning that came out of the city of Newport's reports and implement those in Costa Mesa, and even if possible, have a joint meeting. We are serving both cities, and so if the city of Newport Beach did a fantastic job in nine months and implemented a plan, I would love to know what they did, that we could work with them, and then also share that learning with the city of Costa Mesa. I think it's really important, particularly now that we have more students walking. And then I just, I wanted to thank, Doctor Sir, thank you for that work with getting the manipulatives into the students' hands. I think that's so, so important. We have so many students that don't have access to resources at home, so thank you for that, and happy holidays to everybody.
Trustee Barto.
Thank you. I am so excited to serve with you trustees. I've been very impressed by your depth of knowledge and questions and passion for students, so I'm excited to work with you going forward. I went to the CSBA conference as well. I enjoyed the Governance with Equity Lens as well. I also thought was, the one silver lining of having the conference online was that you could go and look at every handout from every session that you would have wanted to attend, so that was helpful, and I read through a lot of that. And I also attended a Newport Mesa Pro Literacy virtual event recently, and also my kids at their school are doing a holiday book swap. So it reminded me of the effort that we need to make to work to get books into the hands of our students. I'm so happy to see so many teachers taking the matters into their own hands, and part of their holiday celebration is literally giving children books for Christmas. And I think that's maybe something that we've gotten caught up in other things, but is coming to such a critical point that, like the math manipulatives, teachers are taking that into their own hands. So we, either partnering with the Newport Beach Library or partnering with Newport Mesa Pro Literacy, they've all had some great ideas on how they can help school districts, and so I wanted to see if we could talk about that in the coming year or have involvement in that, and wanted to wish everyone a happy holiday, a happy holiday season as well, and please be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Matuei. I'll put her last, and then me.
Oh, yeah, you too. Thank you. Yes, on CSBA, it was fabulous. I also wanted to mention that at that CSBA conference, the delegate assembly meets, and Mrs. Black was a delegate for years and years, and so I'm really hopeful that we can get back to having two delegates from Newport Mesa. One of the things we discussed were the, we discuss a lot of the administrative stuff that people do, but the best thing that's come out of it is all Orange County delegates have been meeting at least once a month, and that is just a fabulous time for the boards to get input from other school districts right away, straight on, and develop relationships. Because we often hear from our constituents, well, they're doing this there, why can't we do this? And what I heard in those meetings were, oh, my gosh, we're having so much trouble. We just don't hear their troubles. They hear their troubles. We hear our troubles. That, and I wanted to commend Costa Mesa High School's cheer squad, they have been competing virtually and have won several national championships. And it's, I'm hoping we get a good story out of that, Mrs. Franco. I'm hoping we can get that, to me, that should be on the news, that the girls and boys are actually practicing social distance, safe distance apart, and they're submitting online programs, and they have won a number of them. I didn't write them all down, but when I found out, I was just amazed, and it's very exciting to think that someone's making lemonades out of the lemons that we've been getting. Thank you, Mrs. Johnson and your Costa Mesa cheer team. Go Maverick!
And Trustee Ursula.
I just want to echo what others have said about, thank you to all of the staff and fellow trustees for being so welcoming and helping to onboard us in a relatively short period of time with a relatively lot of information. So Vanessa Galey and Dr. Jokum in particular, you all have been very instrumental in giving us key pieces of information in these past couple of days that have been very useful. I'm very excited to get to work, and it's an honor to be here and to really pay attention to our families that may not be as vocal as other families, that may not speak up as often, and I would just urge all the parents out home. If you have concern about agenda items, when you see things come up, these budgets, these different issues that come up, you know, what days should there be distance learning or not, you've got to speak up through written comments so that all of the trustees here, when you tell just myself or just one of us, anecdotes do not make data, so we need, we need everyone to speak up in a written form so that we can have a fair assessment of what the public is actually saying. So thank you for, everyone for being engaged, and this is a democracy that will work for you if you speak up and participate. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And I would just like to thank everybody for their privilege of serving as president this year. I don't take that lightly. It's a difficult position. This has been a difficult year, and as we see it right now, 2021 doesn't look to be much less like that. But I am committed to building a very strong board governance team and making sure everyone's voice is heard, and I hope that we can all keep that dialogue going. And equally, to supporting the staff, and I think that's important that all of us. This has been a really tough time. Our staff is doing unbelievable things to keep our schools running, and I think we all appreciate that. And then on the December issue of all the things we normally enjoy, and the new trustees unfortunately are not able, or none of us are able to enjoy this year, but you haven't had the experience, of being at lunches with M&amp;O or transportation or a district staff, where our own Jeff Trader dresses up like Santa Claus every year. They're really very special, and we get to go out to schools and enjoy the lunches with the teachers for the holidays. We're not doing that this year. But I just want to make sure that every staff member in the district knows that we appreciate everything they've done over this year since March, when we've really taken a turn in a very different direction, but we really appreciate all the efforts of everyone to make sure that student learning is at the top priority and the safety of the kids and the staff. And I just wish everybody a happy holidays. We're already almost over with Hanukkah, and Christmas is coming up, and just everyone take some time to take off, enjoy your families, recharge, reset, and let's come back strong in January. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Oh, I'm sorry, we are not, we are.
You get adjourned.
We are returning into closed session. So then there will be no report out, but to everybody again, have a happy holiday season, and we will see you in January.